I call this meeting to Tacoma Park City Council with order. Please call the hall.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens is picking up a constituent and bringing him to the meeting. He will be back here shortly. There are no additional agenda items this evening. I do want to remind folks that after tonight, we go on our August recess. And we return after Labor Day on Tuesday, September 6th. And I wanted to point out that on that meeting on the 6th, we have some items in the work session that at this point are listed for that meeting. And that includes discussion of revisions to the ethics, part of the code, an update on police department use of license plate scanners, and continued discussion of city committees. And then the following two weeks, Monday, the 12th and Monday, the 19th, we have tentative discussion of vision for the city's recreation services. And on the 19th, we also have a firm commitment from County Councilmember Mark Elrich to come and talk with us and provide an update on what's happening at the county. So that's a couple of the things that will be happening in September when we come back. We'll now go to public comment period. And that's the time when anybody who'd like to speak on anything that's not one of our voting items on this evening's agenda can make comments. So it's anything not on our regular meeting agenda, but it would be anything on the work session discussion and anything not on the agenda at all. And if you'd like to come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Daniels-Cullen, 19 Sherman Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I think you should have the memorandum that I'm going to read from. But these are comments on council members as liaisons to committees. At the July 18, 2011 council meeting during the talks for the good of the city, that's what I call it, you all call it, citizen comments, there were three citizens from our fair city who spoke about the committee item that was on the agenda. All three of us requested that the council consider having at least one council member per city-sponsored committee as a liaison. I've included my comments in this memorandum as a reminder, bolded and underlined my specific request, which was, "I know that you are a busy group, but I request that each of the mayor and city council members take on a committee of their choice with which to be a liaison." Only one council member spoke in favor of this suggestion. My request this week is that you reconsider your position in view of the three community members making the same liaison request. The citizen comments were spontaneous and made by three participants in several city-sponsored committees. Perhaps there could be two of you per committee, and you could also rotate the committee assignments throughout the year so that everyone would have a more understanding of what goes on at the committee level. I think it would open up the council's eyes to the effective involvement of the citizenry. Again, I'm asking you to consider the voices of your constituents as each took time out from rather busy schedules to make their comments on this matter and requests of you. I thank you for allowing me to speak before you this evening, and I thank you for all that you do for the city of Tacoma Park. And I did that in a minute and 30.
Thank you. And we will be taking up that topic as part of our continuing discussion on city committees. So nothing has been decided on that.
I'll be back.
I'm sure you will. Anybody else?
I'm Lori Cherkoudian, Ethan Allen Avenue, active with SASCA. In particular, I've tried very hard to work with SASCA to make sure that as many voices as possible on the sidewalk question could be heard in this process. I'm really glad that the council is looking at the process. I happen to think process is very important. And I think, I sort of referenced this on Ward 2 night, but I just want to say a little bit more about this idea of kind of broadening the conversation. I think that the very narrow focus on sort of sidewalks or not, there is obviously a lot of tension and people with very strong opinions on both ends of that spectrum. And I think, of course, that most of them share a lot of the same underlying values. They share the values of pedestrian safety, of bike safety, of inclusive and accessible communities, and efficient traffic flow. And I think that they have really different ideas about what it takes to get there. And so it seems that there's some more information that it could be helpful to gather as we kind of broaden out the conversation. See, through the tool study, we have information about connectors, and we have information about ease of building through the SASCA survey and the conversations that the city has sponsored, the meetings. We have some ideas about some of residents' opinions. But we don't have objective information, as far as I know, on traffic flow and on sort of danger on the road, sort of a danger assessment or a sense of traffic flow and how safe or how easy they are to walk on as they currently are now. And I include in that not just the streets that don't have sidewalks, but the streets that also do have sidewalks, because a sense of how dangerous or accessible or inaccessible the streets with sidewalks are might make us reprioritize funding towards fixing those sidewalks, in addition to putting new ones in or deciding not to put new ones in. And so it seems that it makes sense to broaden out the conversation and to understand traffic flow. And if we do that, it feels like it can open up a lot of really important pieces to the puzzle. So for example, a lot of the cut-through traffic that creates a lot of the danger is there and problematic because the junction is so problematic. And of course, we'll hear soon from the junction folks, but as the junction gets fixed, maybe that will change the rest of the traffic flow. And as we look at the broader flow patterns, as opposed to just this one block or that one block, it seems like it opens up more opportunities for systemic solutions. Ultimately, I think those systemic solutions and the broader planning-based solutions could involve installing new sidewalks in some places. I do think that that may be some places where they need to be. But they could also involve speed limit changes. It could also involve other traffic calming. That kind of analysis could support the discussion you're having also about speed humps and where those go and don't go. And so it seems like kind of looking more systemically, both at what's all the information we need to make, to meet all of these goals, and then what are all the solutions that might meet all those goals, could give us more sort of sustainable, and I mean that both environmentally and also community-wise, more sustainable solutions that meet all those goals. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
My name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4. David P. Stellion. I want to tell everybody that next week, in the month of August, we're not going to be here. We're on recess. And I want to tell the city council and the mayor, happy recess time. Have a good time. Don't get your fight in the playground or anything. Also, I want to announce that on August the 5th and August the 8th, we're having the Hiroshima and Nagasaki commemorations down in DC. Usually at the reflecting pool, the candle lantern float and everything. And on the 8th, we have the Nagasaki commemorations, which is, oh, this thing ain't working right, which is, could commemorate the atomic bombings of, it'll be the 66th anniversary of the atomic bombings of Japan, Hiroshima and Nagasaki, something we should never have done and we have no right to do ever again. And we want to get as many people from Tacoma Park down there to remember, commemorate, and remember what happened over there and what we can do to prevent it from ever happening again. Yes, and also, I'd like to see if we could, on the National Night Out, which is coming up on the 2nd, to us, the mothers and everybody, to pledge that they will keep an eye on their children at all the different public events we have in our city and anywhere else, like the stores or playgrounds or anyplace else that they could be left alone at a young age. I wouldn't, I got some mothers and fathers, please keep an eye on their children, because a tragedy can only happen once and it cannot be reversed. My health would not take it if I, if we found a child with nothing but a set of boats in the, in the park, like I've seen on the news a few times around the country. And I don't want to ever see that happen in Tacoma Park, and I'm doing everything I can to prevent it. So please, watch your children throughout the summer. Watch your pets too while you're at it. But anyway, I just want to remember, remind people of Hiroshima and Nagasaki and the National Night Out. Those are three things that we can all do to support our city and support our life on our planet. And again, happy anniversary, everybody out there. Happy, happy recess, I mean, not anniversary, whatever my saying. Happy anniversary, I mean, happy recess to the city of Tacoma Park, the city council and the mayor. All right. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Peace. Happy recess.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, and I was here to talk about Agenda Item 10, which is your work session on sidewalks. And I'm a little bit hampered because our printers were all out at work today. So while I looked at the document quickly earlier today, I couldn't print it, and there's none there on the rack. So I'm going to speak from memory, so hopefully I'll cover the key points. Once again, this is a city document that mixes ADA and new sidewalks, and it makes absolutely no mention of the fact that ADA does not require new sidewalks. I know that the city council knows that ADA does not require new sidewalks. I know that ADA does not require new sidewalks, yet not every citizen and council only knows that because citizens raised that issue with them. And not every citizen knows that. And so I would make a request of the city manager that every document that comes out about sidewalks or ADA clearly states ADA does not require new sidewalks. There was a mention in there about whether the city council should allow someone to veto sidewalks. I think the council had some discussion about that, because they didn't want one person to stop a sidewalk project. But here we have situations in a number, pretty much every neighborhood where sidewalks have been proposed, where it's not one person who's sitting there vetoing. It is a clear majority saying, "We do not want sidewalks." I know that Central Avenue and Auburn Avenue and Larch Avenue and Elm Avenue, and even on Erskine Avenue, people have said they do not want sidewalks. I was at the last Erskine Avenue meeting, and there was one person there other than the councilmember Schultz who said he wanted sidewalks. Everyone else said, "We want traffic calming." I really do appreciate that councilmember Clay has said that she would be willing to support not having sidewalks on Auburn Avenue and Central Avenue. I would make that request that she honor the petitions of the 70% of the resident households on Elm Avenue and the 80 or more percent of households on Larch Avenue that say they do not want or need sidewalks. And lastly, there was an article in The Post today about the dead zone in the Chesapeake that is expanding, that June was the worst month ever in terms of runoff pollution. And I would beg the city council to not add to that by adding additional impervious surface. And in the one second I've got left, I will second case recommendation that there be council liaisons on the committees, because I think that would have been very helpful on the committee in the environment. I felt, I felt bad for years that council were feeling like they didn't know what was going on in the committee, and we didn't know what council was thinking. We would send emails and they would go into a black hall, we would never hear anything. So I think having a liaison, having somebody who was assigned, who had regular communications with the committee would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my views as one of the signers of the Elm Avenue petition. I appreciate the thoroughness of the council of trying to get very, get accurate information, keep discussion open. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 36 years, raised a child here, taught the child to ride a bicycle. I walk about five hours a week, an hour every day in the neighborhood. Everyone sees me, and I love my community. But, and I haven't felt threatened, okay, personally, by traffic. I know that I need to teach children to be vigilant, I need to be aware. But I place a priority on environmental protection of urban trees and drainage. That's what makes, part of what makes my community, and I don't want them threatened. As soon as I learned of the sidewalk effort, I just took a walk in my neighborhood, down a few blocks, and I counted 40 trees that would be threatened. I think there are better ways to promote safety, and there are just a host of difficulties with installation such as retaining walls and maintenance costs. And the money would be spent better on other measures for safety. Thank you.
Thanks. Can you tell us who you are, please?
My name is Sharon Mandell, 902 Elm Avenue.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chef Bronzo, 119 Sherman Avenue. I just wanted to make brief comments about two items on tonight's agenda, 1 and 5. One is a member of the Tacoma Junction Task Force. I want to express all the worthwhile, intense effort this has been, and thanks to the council for making this group possible. In particular, I wanted to commendate our leadership, Seth Grimes and Howard Cohn, who have done a tremendous effort in keeping very divergent opinions moving forward. And they've just done a really outstanding job. And I know the council's been considering what to do with committees in the future. If this hasn't come up, and I'm sorry I haven't been following it closely, I would recommend some form of 360 evaluations, because I think it would be very useful for committee members. And even city liaison, and if we're going to have council liaisons as well, for everyone to give feedback about how each other's performance was. My comments are, second, the second item, number 5, traffic calming on Sherman Avenue. I know it appears as a speed hump. I just wanted to reiterate that the petition was for traffic calming efforts on the slow block of Sherman Avenue. I think everyone knows my opinions, that I do not believe that speed humps are dangerous. I defy anyone to give me any evidence that they are. If that, if we're going to go in that direction, I hope that the next council will take a little bit of time to study the issue about traffic calming on inclines. In particular, let's have an off-the-shelf remedy like a speed hump that we can prescribe for the issues. We still have the same problems on Sherman Avenue. It's viewed as a roller coaster downhill. People go as fast as they can downhill and squeal to a halt at the bottom. And we have the intense acceleration. People accelerate madly that you can't even have a conversation on your front porch, and they slam on the brakes at the top of the hill for the second speed bump. This is just not tolerable, and we have to have a solution at some point. It doesn't have to be now. I think it does need study, but we still, we still need a solution. So I'd like to see the petition for traffic calming stay alive, even if the speed hump goes away. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Sally Tabor. I live at 703 Auburn Avenue. I'm here to talk about the sidewalk issue. I have to say, when I saw the background information that was posted, I was really dismayed. I was expecting to see a document that sets forth a process for making decisions on sidewalks. And I see a lot of questions, but I don't see a process proposed. And I hope that council will start taking steps to address that. This issue of what the process is came up several times in discussions that city staff had in the two meetings with my neighborhood, SASCA, SASCA Sligo Citizens Association. And in particular, we actually have a block in our neighborhood that over a year ago sent a letter and a petition to the city requesting a sidewalk on that block. And at this point, it's not even in the work plan for this year, it's for next year. And I was informed by city staff, well, we don't really have a mechanism to respond to a petition for a sidewalk because we don't have a process. So I would urge you to, to consider this issue. I realize that you're about to go in recess, that probably not a lot's going to be done until the fall, but I still, I would hope that you would make this a priority. Thank you.
Let me just say that the intent of this discussion this evening is to have clear direction on that process. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Sniffer.
Thank you. I just want to let the residents of Ward 5, or anyone else for that matter, but especially Ward 5 residents, and those who live on the other side of Flower Avenue, that the Flower Avenue-Green Street project is getting going, and we're going to have the first of probably many, community meetings on Wednesday, August 3rd, between 7:00 PM and 8:30 PM in Wilkinson Hall at the Washington Adventist University, which is at the corner of Flower and Division Street. The meeting will be in the lobby, and we're going to be getting out notices in the next day or so, but I wanted folks to get that on their calendar for Wednesday, August 3rd. And we'll start talking about planning for the Flower Avenue-Green Street. The second thing I want to say is that I know this will come up again, but there's a couple of blocks in Ward 5 that have been, like someone else, requesting sidewalks for a long time. And we look forward to the opportunity for sidewalks to be worked on in Ward 5. Thank you.
Councilmember Warren.
I want to address something that's not sidewalks, and that is the park in Ward 3, actually partly in Ward 1 as well. It's called the Tacoma Urban Park, and it includes both gazebo and the playground area down below on West Moreland. And last year, we passed a resolution to rename that park to honor Gilbert Conbay, who's a much-loved local hero. And the, I've met with Mary Bradford, who is the director of parks for Montgomery County, and walked her around, I mentioned this a couple of months ago, and she said that she was not willing and was not in the stars to rename the entire park for Gilbert Conbay, but she was willing to dedicate a portion of the park, specifically the playground area, that seemed to be the appropriate spot in his name. And that would entail putting a plaque at the, underneath the existing plaque, which says Tacoma Urban Park. It would be this playground dedicated to Gilbert Conbay or some such. And I would like to bring this up with my colleagues and to see if there are objections to that approach, to honoring Gilbert Conbay by putting a dedication plaque underneath the, the existing park plaque. Is that something I can do in this, in this setting, to have an informal, like a straw boat, saying that there's a measure of support? And if so, I'll call Mary Bradford again, get in touch with her, and schedule that for September. That would be my preference.
Yeah, my sense is we may want to talk about it.
I remember in the, let me just interject, I remember in the discussion that we talked a little bit about having a discussion about how to honor local heroes. And I thought that was a good, a good suggestion, and I support that, and I'd like to have that suggestion. And I don't know how you want to take this, the extension of our resolution to honor Gilbert Conbay in full by naming the entire park, and rather than that, putting his name on a particular part of that park. I don't know how mayor or colleagues, I don't know how we want to approach that. But it is something I'd like to, to pursue, so that if there is support to do that, that level of honoring of Gilbert Conbay, we can do it, and I can put it on, on Mary Bradford's radar screen.
Maybe we could put that on a, like a September 6th agenda and take, take care of it fairly quickly, we could have that discussion.
Okay.
Would that take care of the need to get back to her?
Yes, that'd be fine. Would that suit us?
We'll, I'll put it on the 6th.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I was just going to talk about one thing, because I wanted to emphasize it, but while, since councilmember Sniffer mentioned that there's an upcoming meeting around the Flower Avenue-Green Street, I want to make sure that there's an effort to invite the Long Branch Sligo people, especially if any of this occurs while I may be vacationing in a tropical paradise. So...
And just because you are, I'll forget to do it.
Thank you. The Long Branch Sligo people live close by you, so I don't think you should exclude them.
I fully intend.
So could you, okay. So here's my thing that I would like to emphasize. I talked about this, I can't remember if it was last week or the week before, and back in September, about the sinkhole at the corner of Larch and Hayward. And so what I would like to let the city know in public forum is that there's yet another sinkhole opening up in the street. Just to recap for my, my council friends and the folks in the audience, there is a storm drain that faces Larch Avenue that borders the house at 812 Hayward Avenue. There's actually a storm drain on the Hayward side as well. But back in September, the storm drain on the Larch side had a large hole in it, and Public Works came out and they put a barricade up for a while, and then they came along and they, they put a patch in it. And things seemed to move along. The patch looked a little funky, but Public Works had said that it was on the schedule to be repaired, and it was cracked and broken inside, and that it needed to be replaced. Since that time and this month, the house at that corner, over the past year, has experienced, I think, sinking essentially, and it's essentially dropping. The foundation is dropping below the level of the rest of the house, and there is a large sinkhole in the yard, about probably 10 feet up from where the, where the storm drain is at. I went and visited the yard last weekend, and there are small, little depression sinkholes in the yard. And before the rain today, but after the three days of sweltering heat, another sinkhole has opened up in the street adjacent to the old sinkhole. And this, this sinkhole is about a foot, a foot by a foot, and I think this one is about, maybe this is the one that's 17 inches deep. Anyway, another pit. You can see through to the old sinkhole, which appears to be propped, being propped up by two-by-fours, which is sort of odd. I think we should do something. June. Maybe tomorrow.
Councilmember Schultz.
I want to talk about the, something I've mentioned before, a long time ago here, and that is the, my concerns about the newspaper, the Montgomery Gazette. There was a time when this was a newspaper that I used to read, because it was delivered every week to sidewalk in front of my house, the walkway. But a couple of years ago, the Gazette stopped delivering the newspaper, and I couldn't figure out why. And I noticed recently, started to focus that when I'm out walking my dog, I don't usually see the newspapers piled up in the curves or, you know, soaking in the rain or, or just rarely you might have, used to have seen them when they'd been recently delivered. just rarely you might have, used to have seen them when they'd been recently delivered. So this week, I, or last week, I sent out a, an email request to three listservs in Ward Six, the Tacoma Overlook condominium listserv, the Hillwood Manor listserv, which is about, covers, Hillwood Manor is about 80, 80-some households, and the New Hampshire Gardens listserv. And I asked anyone to, to respond who has received the Gazette, because I figured, you know, maybe I'm the only one, or maybe my personal observations aren't very scientific. Well, I received about 20 or some responses, and all of them were responses that said that they hadn't gotten to see the Gazette, it hadn't been delivered for a couple of years. And I recollect the last time I got one was probably in the spring of 2010. You might say, well, what difference does it make? Well, here's, the thing is, is it's several, several things. I think there's four different points. Number one, the Gazette has, much to its credit, decided to rearrange its reporting, and Jeremy Arias used to be the reporter that covered the Tacoma Park, and he did a good job, and we got to know him. And then that plan was dissolved. And just very recently, within the last couple of months, they've gone back to that plan, and now we have a reporter who is covering Tacoma Park as her regular beat. And she's doing, she's been to, attending our meetings here on a very regular basis for the last month or two, and I think that that's great. I'm really happy for that. But it's unfortunate for the reporter is that residents of Ward Six, which make up at least a third of the city, a sixth of the city. I know, I didn't do good in math. I didn't do well in math.
Okay, we're English.
All right, okay. It's so hard to maintain dignity. Anyway, that awful lot of people aren't getting the benefit of having any opportunity to see whatever it is that's reported on. Second of all, the city advertises in the Gazette, I am told, to report, to publish notices, public notices, which are required to be placed in newspapers of general circulation. Well, I would contend that the Montgomery Gazette, at least for the city of Tacoma Park, is no longer, and hasn't been for a couple of years, a newspaper of general circulation, and we ought not be running public notices in it until they decide to start delivery. It is, and, you know, it's depriving residents of, of the opportunity for news. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, is that advertisers advertise in the Gazette, a lot of local businesses, mom and pops, the kind that we all cherish, and if that advertising is being sold to them at a certain price, they're getting cheated possibly. I won't say that they are, because I don't know, but it seems to me, when you are a business and you advertise, and you understand that the newspaper's being delivered to the residents of Tacoma Park, and it's not, then you're not getting your money's worth. You're not getting what you think you're getting. So I'm just frustrated about this. I don't know why the Gazette has taken the tactic that they have, but I think it's a, it's a problem for us legally, from the standpoint of putting public notices in it, because if you put a public notice in there, I can tell you, and rely, if the city does that, and expects that that's public notice to the residents of Ward Six, it isn't so. I have no idea how this goes with any of the neighborhoods in the city, but I, and I'd be curious to find out, but that's not my point right now. Thank you.
I have just one, well, two things that I wanted to mention. The first is a reminder that National Night Out is next week, it's August 2nd, Tuesday night, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Piney Branch Elementary School, which is right next door to this building. And there's going to be a number of activities, and remind everybody that that's happening, and I encourage everybody to go. And secondly, I just wanted to let people know that I had a very enjoyable and productive weekend at the Council of Governments Board Retreat, and we had a number of presentations, and a very interesting one on the census, and I supplied information from that to my colleagues and to city staff, very interesting in understanding how the region is changing, and how Tacoma Park is changing relative to the region. And the second piece that I found the most interesting was a presentation by a couple of people, including representatives of Arlington County and Loudoun County, on their process for community energy planning. And it was interesting to, to look at environmental sustainability through the lens of energy planning. And the, the thing that brought it home for me was looking at the place for various types of energy, and the generation of that energy more locally than on the grid, looking at opportunities for buildings to share energy production and energy consumption, because of the importance of the fact that you can generate all kinds of energy through wind or solar panels, but the transmission of that energy loses a huge amount of energy in that transmission system. I'm not sure of the accurate percentage, the one that sticks in my mind that may be wrong is that up to 70% of energy that is generated is lost in the transmission, and it's mainly lost through heat. And even though we can be proud of energy that is clean energy that's produced locally, if it's going into the grid, it's, we're losing an awful lot of the efficiency and an awful lot of the bang for the buck for generating that type of electricity. So this was looking at, how does a community be efficient in its use, in its generation, and its use of energy locally?
Sorry, my light has randomly started working.
Lucky you.
Apparently.
So it was, it was an interesting presentation. Those two communities have gone through a discussion about how to increase the energy efficiency of their communities, and I, I thought it was extremely helpful. And I talked to those representatives who are both on their boards of supervisors, and know them both, and they would be willing to come talk to us about those discussions, how they change their communities, and it's a very forward-thinking way of looking at this, and they're in the forefront in the, in the country in looking at things this way. It looked at how other places around the world, like Seoul, Korea, and various places in Europe, do this, and how they're way ahead of the United States in general on this. I found it fascinating, and I thought it might inform our efforts as we go forward on our sustainability efforts. So if my colleagues are interested, if you would take a look at the information that I passed along, let me know if there's anybody who is in the audience who would like that information, I'm happy to pass it along. And I thought it might be a good topic for some discussion. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. It's with a heavy and divided heart that I announced today that I will not run for reelection in the coming election. It was a hard decision, but the demands of my, the growing demands of my job at the Treasury Department, my two kids, Aviva and Isaac, and the demands of being a good father, and the standard that I, I, and I think all of us would set for ourselves in terms of being a city council member, I don't feel that going forward, I can do all three of those things to the level of service that they deserve. It's been a pleasure to serve with my fellow council members and mayor. I've enjoyed working with the council, the city manager, city staff, the clerk, chief, and many members of the community, Seth and Howard here in the community tonight, and Roz Grigsby also. I'm proud of the things that we're all able to accomplish together so far, going to 100% wind power and accomplishing the Green Deal for Tacoma Park, making Tacoma Park a safer place in partnership with the police department, improving the responsiveness of the city government, getting through a tough budget time while focusing on our priorities, and improving Old Town and the economic development that's going on there, and the reduction of vacancies. It's a much more vibrant, safe, and wonderful place. Now, I'm not done yet. I do look forward to serving out the remainder of my term, focusing on providing some clarity around the policy priorities for the Recreation Department, working on the functioning of the city committees, and the sidewalk process, and of course constituent issues. And also, of course, as any good Tacoma Park City Council member, focusing on some issues that affect the larger community. So getting a resolution passed here that asks the governor to take a strong stand on equality of marriage in the coming session, and also asking that he withdraw from the Secure Communities Program of the federal government. I'd love serving on, on the city council and serving our city, my constituents. Public service is something I love, I enjoy, and I feel deeply passionate about. I'll continue to be engaged in Tacoma Park and Montgomery County. I hope to continue to work on economic development, work on figuring out ways to bring our diverse community more closely together and interconnected, and also working on connections into the county and our surrounding neighbors, the city of DC and Prince George's County. The future for Tacoma Park is bright. We should all be proud the way we address issues at home and set examples for other communities, the way we take on tough issues that go beyond our borders. And I'm certain that we'll always be on the right side of history in those things. I do also hope that my future circumstances allow me, again, to engage in public service in the future, in a way that's, in a capacity that's useful and helpful to the community. I, again, appreciate and thank the citizens for allowing me to serve as their city council member for these past two terms, and I continue to be, look forward to continuing to be an active member in the Tacoma Park community. Thank you.
And let me just say that we've enjoyed working with you, we will continue to enjoy working with you, and I know that we can all in this community count on having both you and Councilmember Robinson continue to work with this council, and staff, and the rest of the community in making this a better place to live, and we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
City managers' comments.
I just have a few comments this evening, I'll be brief. I just wanted to add, for the record, that included in your packet is the quarterly report of staff activities for the quarter that ended June 30th, and would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank all the city staff members for their good work during that time period. Also in your packet is a very preliminary, and I stress preliminary, financial report for fiscal year 11. As noted in the memo that accompanies the report, we do use a modified accrual basis of accounting, and so there are still revenues that are coming in that will be credited back to fiscal year 11. But at this point in time, and what we try to do is give you some information on what the budget was, recap what we had talked about during the FY12 budget process, and what our projections were for fiscal year 11 at that time, and sort of compare that to where we are today. On the revenue side, at this point in time, we're up by about $83,000 compared to where I thought we would be during the budget process. A couple of reasons for that, income taxes, as we talked about, are always notoriously hard to predict, and, you know, it does look like things are going a little bit better than we had thought. We will likely get another payment from income taxes sometime during the summer. Railroad and public utilities, which is the real estate tax, as you all know, on railroad and public utilities, is coming in a little higher than we had thought. We did get a telecommunications license payment that didn't look like we were going to be able to collect for last year, and that came in. And then of particular interest to the council, given some other discussion last week, you may want to just take a look at some of the figures for recreation programs. This was a source, as we talked about during the budget process, that we did expect to come in higher than budget. The budgeted amount was just about $337,000. I had indicated during the FY12 budget process that we thought we would bring in about $400,000. And as of today, this number should stay pretty much the same, because most of the rec stuff is on cash basis. We had brought in about $428,000. So things are looking good on that front. The expenditure side of the equation is much more difficult to give you an idea of where things stand, as noted in the memo. We do have a lot of open purchase orders, and we're waiting for invoices from vendors for last fiscal year. In the memo, I had, we had indicated that expenditures recorded to date were $20 million. I checked that this evening before the meeting started, and that number was now 20, 20 million 400,000, mainly because of things that we paid last Friday. I was spending some time this evening looking at where we were on the Public Works facility just because of the wet spring. I will be bringing forward a budget amendment to you in September. I had only expected to have a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of expenses in fiscal year 12 for Public Works. It will probably be more a million plus, just because of the timing difference, a lot less work got done in the spring than we had anticipated. So it's, it's not that things are over by a million dollars, it's simply the recording of expenditures on one side of June 30th or another. I guess that's it. Like I say, it is very preliminary, you know, we'll continue booking expenditures and revenues throughout the summer, and the auditors will be coming sometime in September to do the majority of their work. They did some preliminary field work in May, but the bulk of their work will be in September.
Any questions? Councilmember Snipper.
Just a comment. I don't have it with me, I managed to leave my packet at home. But I do want to say that, in contrast to some prior years, the various departments came much closer to their budget expenditures than they have in prior years, which I think is a good thing, because I find it upsetting when they don't spend all the money we, you know, budget for them. So for me, I was very happy with the report, and of course, the revenue news is very, very good news.
The only other, other thing I just wanted to mention is, there's been some, a lot of media coverage about the proposed curfew that's being discussed by Montgomery County, and how that may or may not apply to the city if it were to be enacted. If Montgomery County passes legislation, it would be applicable to Tacoma Park unless the city council elected by ordinance to opt out of it. So I know there's been a lot of confusion about that. We'll obviously have to wait and see what the county council does. I think those discussions will stretch into the fall, after they come back from their recess, and we'll certainly be tracking that as a staff. But if the county were to enact any kind of curfew, it would be applicable to the city, unless we, he also took some action to the contrary.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting to hear, because my assumption had been that all of the discussion in the media about, well, gee, if the county did it, then what would Rockville and Gaithersburg do? And I thought, well, we're the only ones with the independent police department, and it would be up to our police department to enforce it. They should be talking about Tacoma Park, not the others.
Yeah, it was my assumption it would apply to us, but I did confirm that was the city attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
The last item I had, I think the chief did want to come up and make a few announcements.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz, head her.
One question, and that is, customarily, on this accrual basis of handling revenues and expenses, when do you customarily close the books on a fiscal year?
It's not officially closed until the auditors come and basically look at the books. We don't tend to have a lot of audit-driven adjustments, but there are some from time to time.
Right, okay, okay, so it's, okay, I understand. Thank you.
And I'll just make a quick comment, that as always, when reading the quarterly update on the various activities undertaken in the city, it's a long report, it's 20 pages of single-spaced information, it's very dense, but it's also very interesting to look at this, to see what's going on in the city. So I would encourage anybody who has an interest in knowing what's going on in the city, I'm assuming there may be some over in the rack. If not, they're available on the web.
That's correct.
And the, these quarterly updates provide a wealth of information about various activities in the city, in, in many cases, in great depth. So I'd encourage people to take a look. Councilmember Wright.
I just want to be clear to understand what happens to the fund balance. I know you said the fund balance is going down, but is it going down compared to what we had budgeted?
had budgeted, or will the fund balance be slight, it sounds like the fund balance will be slightly larger than what we would have thought we would have had if the budget had been carried out.
Right. I'll answer the question two ways if I can. It was projected to go down mainly because we paid for a significant portion of the Public Works facility with cash, which was planned. My guess is it will be higher than what we had originally projected because of a little bit more revenue than we had assumed, but primarily because of the disparity in Public Works renovation expenditures. So it's really a matter of timing.
Meaning that some of them will fall in 2012 as opposed to 2011?
Right. I had expected virtually all the work to be done by June 30th, and basically looking at the last pay application, there's still about a million dollars left on that contract. And if things had gone smoothly with weather, we probably would have only had about $200,000 left to be paid in fiscal year 12. So you'll see a huge difference because of that primarily.
But, but isn't it true that, I know it's not final, but is it true that, take that issue out on the timing, that the fund balance would be slightly higher than we had, we would have thought it would have been had the budget played out the way we had adopted it?
It would be simply because revenues are somewhat higher than I projected. That's correct.
Okay. Now, Chief. It's good exercise.
Let me add on about the curfew. Chief Major, I'll soon contact with you today, and his staff will be briefing us on the law and what's going on with it, so I can report back to City Manager and the council what's taking place on that as it goes through the process. Several things tonight. Safe to come in partnership with Metro Transit Police. We'll be promoting Metro Safety at Metro stations on next Monday, August 1st, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Tacoma Park Police Department will be participating in this event, along with Metropolitan Police Department, and obviously Metro Transit Police, obviously stressing the importance of safety on public transportation. We'll have a table set up, and myself and our community service officer will be there distributing and talking to residents. So I want to remind them that'll be next Monday night. With the summer beginning, I want to remind people once again that this fall, we're going to have our Citizens Police Academy. Of course, it's designed to educate our citizens on the duties of our police department, our police officers, a glimpse into the department to meet its people and different people that help make it run every day, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. The academy will commence on October 6th. It will run from 7:00 to 9:30 each Thursday night for 10 weeks. They'll be held at the Tacoma Park Community Center. There's no cost to participate. Deadline for registration will be August 31st, and we've still got plenty of seats. But you can also contact our community outreach officer at 301-891-7121 to register. And we really want to encourage people who want to learn about our police department and what goes on. And it's one of the programs that I've promoted for the last 25 years. I was a part of the first one with Montgomery County. We've had it, started it in Front Royal. They're now on their 12th since I left. So it's a great program, and it really gives a community a part, and it emphasizes volunteerism, which I know is something the council emphasized over the last couple of years. So I want to urge people to sign up for that. And once again, National Night Act, thank you Mayor for pushing it, and our peace delegate. A lot of people ask what National Night's all about. It's a public event that's throughout the nation. It's sponsored by Target. It celebrates crime prevention and public safety. Community policing is a partnership with our community. It's a chance to meet our officers and the different people, our civilians in our department that work on a daily basis, get to see some of our programs, equipment, meet some of the other policemen in the community that'll be participating in this event. Crime prevention and safety is for everyone. We're emphasizing this is for the entire community this year. So I want to once again extend an invitation to our community to attend. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Did you have a question, Councilmember Wright?
Yes, I was wondering if the Chief, I know that this curfew law might get enacted soon, and if we don't do anything, it seems like we would be under the curfew. Do you have a perspective on whether Tacoma Park should make itself an exception to that law, or would can, or should fall under whatever the...
Well, once, they're getting ready to go on recess, too. There's going to be a public hearing tomorrow, which we'll be monitoring. I was told there would be no decisions till when they come back, which I think is actually after you all in September. I'm going to be monitoring it. There will be no law passed long before the fall. They're going to be having some meetings, which I've been invited to attend, so I give input to the City Manager to report back to you all what we may need to do. I don't have an opinion on it yet. I want to see all the facts. I think it's too early to come out publicly, because this kind of caught us all off guard when it was presented.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Okay. Then we'll move along to adoption of minutes, and we have minutes from February 14th, February 22nd, and February 28th. Somebody like to move approval?
Sir?
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now move to the presentation on interim report from the Tacoma Junction Task Force. And I'll leave that up to you all in terms of how you want to do that, structure it, how you want to use the podium, people want to move to the front row, or however you want to do it, just...
We'll see.
Okay.
I'm Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue, co-chair, along with Howard Cohn of the Tacoma Junction Task Force. The other members I see present are Lynette Lander, Jeff Tronzo, Lori Tarkudian, and Kaye Daniels-Cohen. So thank you, Jeff, for your kind words earlier. You addressed to Howard and me. I will generalize it to say that, of course, members, various members of the task force have put a lot of effort into the task force, attending meetings, not only the task force meetings, but our subcommittee meetings, meetings with community members, which Kaye will talk about a bit in a few minutes. I'm going to keep this pretty brief. Kaye will talk about some of the outreach efforts. Then, in particular, Jeff and Roger Schlegel have served as the co-secretaries of the task force, responsible for the minutes, which is not an insubstantial task. So we're just about 10 months into our 12-month term. We're set to roll up the end of September, excuse me. Before I start, let me thank Councilmember Wright for his service to the city. I meant to do that at the beginning. As a Ward 1 resident, I'm very appreciative of your efforts on behalf of the ward, and of course, the rest of the city. So get back to the task force. We've, we're most of the way through our effort. We're supposed to roll up on September 30th, and I personally would like to see us observe that target and finish our work by then. Of course, the work isn't going to finish then. You're going to, no doubt, call on task force members, even if the task force no longer officially exists, to, with questions, whatever. The task of trying to make something different and better of Tacoma Junction, obviously, has been going on for quite a long time. There were plans in the late 90s to build on what's now the city parking lot. There have been various efforts, such as the Dan Burton Walkability Study in 2003, that have made recommendations that relate to Tacoma Junction, including the possibility of a roundabout there. There was a State Highway Administration administered effort that was done on behalf of the city to look at the possibility of a roundabout in Tacoma Junction. That effort was in 2006. The report came out in 2007. The council considered it in 2008, and then asked for certain follow-ups by the State Highway Administration that really didn't take place. But in any case, that's brought us, along with other things, to the point where we are now. So we all recognize that efforts in this community, just as in many others, can, need to bring together many different divergent opinions and priorities, try to make something of the, of all of those different opinions, and try to make something in particular that can be enacted, satisfying the majority of people, and creating progress in a positive direction. So as you know from our last report, and if you've been following the task force, including via the very frequent patch articles, which I would just ask you not to take everything you read as conclusive there, which I can discuss with you all later if you wish, we've made significant progress in a number of areas. So essentially, we have three tasks. One is information gathering. A second is synthesis, and a third is to make recommendations and to provide you all with plans. This is reflected in the resolution that you all passed establishing the task force. So recommendations and plans are, in many ways, the most difficult thing for us to do because of the difference in opinions about a number of points, including very central points, like the possibility of a roundabout in Tacoma Junction. So all the same, I will say that we believe we've accomplished some things already, just by having discussions, by having discussions with representatives of the State Highway Administration. Essentially, I believe we surfaced that the vehicle detectors in Tacoma Junction were not operating, so they're slated to be fixed. They haven't been fixed yet, but I think we've also goose the State Highway Administration to relook the timing and cycles of the signals in Tacoma Junction. And without having any scientific data, we believe that traffic flow has been improved there already. We would thank the City Public Works Director, Darrell Braithwaite, and the City Community and Economic Housing Development Director, Sarah Daines. Just based on conversations we had with them, they put up signage to indicate the presence of public parking in the city lot, to make it clear to people who pass through the junction that they can park there and patronize the businesses. So we believe that just by our existence, we've made some progress already. Now we have the task of making more comprehensive progress in a way that will enable you all to, the council, to act on what we have observed, reported, and potentially recommended. So you have in your packets just one thing, and that is a copy of essentially the outline of the report that we are working on. We have a lot more written material that's not within that outline. We don't need to provide that to you right now. For one thing, it's not at all finalized. It's not all voted on or anything like that. But that's the focus of our efforts in the next few months. We've been doing a lot of research and outreach, and we need to turn toward producing a report for you that you can use as the basis for action. We did think it would be worthwhile to do two things. One, you have tasked us to make near-term recommendations. We would make one right now. And then the second thing is talk a little bit more about outreach. So in terms of near-term, as you may or may not be aware of, there are several vacant storefronts along Carroll Avenue in Tacoma Junction, the former TJ's Market, the former Glad Rags, and there's environmental cleanup going on there right now. That is dragging on. The environmental cleanup need impedes the ability to lease those properties to new businesses. We would like to see the existing businesses, I think everyone would like to see the existing businesses, storefronts rather, filled with viable businesses. So we would ask the council now to task staff to work with Montgomery County, to work with the property owners, to work with any other involved government agencies, to expedite the environmental cleanup effort that is at those storefront properties on Carroll Avenue, starting at the former TJ's Market on down. That's something that we would like to see happen now, and that I think can happen now, without regard to traffic or city lot development or anything like that. So I'm going to cede the podium right now to Kaye, who will talk a bit about our outreach effort. And then, I don't think anyone else wants to say anything, but certainly we're all available for questions after Kaye speaks, and, you know, any kind of direction that you would care to give us at this moment about what we should or should not be doing. So Kaye?
Okay. Wow. We, as an outreach team, we were Team B, the outreach team. There were six of us, and any of the conclusions that you're going to see in the report were not drawn just from the committee or the task force. We had meetings with at least eight different citizens associations, including what we call the Stones Throw Group, and that was the people within a couple of blocks of the actual junction, SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, Victory Tower, BF Gilbert, Sycamore Avenue, Saskia, and Pinecrest. We also met with folks at the Franklin specifically to talk to them about the junction, what would cause them, what would have them come up and shop there. And what was interesting about that conversation, when I used the word "junction" with the folks, they, there was this blank look. And I said, you know, the store's up by the co-op. Then they knew what I was talking about. But there, I found that as I spoke to people individually, they didn't know when I said "junction," even though it says Tacoma Junction on the Art Deco Shell, Shell Gas Station, used to be Shell Gas Station, people don't know that that's what the name of the area is. I also spoke with a group of seniors from the Recreation Department, with Paula, last week. They had the same, same kind of reaction. They didn't know about the junction. They all do know about how to take a bus to get there. They just didn't know what the name, the name of the spot was. We had some, we also did some apartment and condo outreach. We have to complete our pedestrian intercept. We're actually going to intercept pedestrians and drag them to the junction, no, I'm kidding, intercept folks that are shopping there to find out what their, what their issues are. We have a very specific questionnaire that we use for each of our, each of our programs, so that we ask exactly the same questions, and folks actually fill them out. We also had about an hour's worth of chat, where they gave us verbal feedback at every one of the meetings, which we have, all of that's been documented. We also have spoken with, and this is just a little Team B, we've spoken with all the businesses, business owners, and we have to complete that with the same series of questions that, about what they like, what will work better for them. And believe it or not, none of them were particularly concerned with crime. It was mostly parking and, you know, and some marketing issues. So a lot of them are doing just fine. My sense was, a lot of folks don't know what services, because there are lots of services offered beyond the co-op. The co-op is the major anchor store. We all know that. But there are lots of services that are offered, offered throughout the, throughout the group of stores at what we call the junction. What's most important, and what, what, I know Roger, who's part of, Roger Schlegel, who's part of this committee of six, our committee is six, or is it the gang's six? I don't know. Whoever's trying to figure out the debt business downtown. We want to make sure that everyone that gave us their email address and worked with us on this whole project knows what the report says and what our recommendations are. That was our commitment. And our commitment was also that something would happen. My major commitment was those lights. Something would happen with those lights, and I don't know what it is, but there, it's not the same. You could start at right, at BY Morrison Park and go straight through Philadelphia Avenue without having to stop at Philly. I don't know what, I don't know who did it, and I've said to everyone, if you're within a mile of a miracle, take credit for it. We're taking credit for it. So maybe lightning struck something that caused it to recycle itself, but SS Carroll's been working since 2008 to make something happen there. And the something that happened was the Tacoma Junction Task Force, and maybe, maybe this is a solution, is a solution to all the traffic issues. I've noted here in the last several weeks, and I know it's summertime, and I know there's no school buses out there, and no people driving to school, there's hardly any traffic congestion, at least on the Sherman, on the Carroll Avenue side. I'm not aware of the Ethan Allen side, but on the Carroll Avenue, it's pretty much, pretty clean every morning. So there you go.
That is an improvement.
I'm assuming that you have questions or concerns that you want to raise?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have anything else that you wanted to present to us.
All right, I guess I'm on that.
Okay. I've got a question about the recommendation on the environmental cleanup. Is that a number of different sites there, a number, I know that there are a lot of different property owners of those stores. I'm trying to understand the, what the holdup is.
Right. So I am not going to be able to answer your questions particularly. As you're aware, Lorraine Pierceall is a member of the task force, and her husband, Paul Krostowski, is a, let me spell that, is an environmental engineer, and actually discussed some of the issues with us. Apparently, there are things that can be done to stem the flow of contaminants underground. I certainly don't have the expertise about it, but this is why we would ask you to task staff to take it on. I'd say this is not a function that you're looking for us to try to pursue.
Right.
But, but yeah, do you want to?
Same property, one property under.
It's the Kessler.
No, sorry, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay. Pardon me, I didn't know.
It's driven by the dry cleaner, right? I mean, the environmental issue is driven by the dry cleaning site, correct?
Yes, correct. Okay. Okay.
This is, so once again, these are existing buildings. I don't think anyone sees any alteration to the existing buildings in a way that would mean those storefronts would go away. In other words, this is something you can take, an action you can take now, that the city can take now, without any long-term implications other than making those spaces leasable again.
Okay. So that there are, there is a space or there are spaces up near Grand Avenue where there are issues with contamination, and that is holding up the leasability with the releasing of those spaces? And that's something that the county is dealing with and we need to kind of stay.
It's actually the state, yeah.
And we need to make sure that it's moving expeditiously.
That's right. The remediation seems to be on a slower track than we would like. There is interest on the part of some private businesses that would like to move, possibly move into those storefronts. So it seems like a win-win if we can speed it up. You can speed it up.
Yeah, we know of several businesses and organizations. There's Blessed Coffee that you all know is entrusted in the junction. There's Artscape, Lorig. There are others that I can't name, but you had written them down.
There's the commercial community kitchen.
Yeah, okay. So there's demand for storefront commercial space in Tacoma Junction. Roz Grigsby, as the Executive Director of the Old Tacoma Business Association, is contacted by people who are looking for commercial spaces, who would be interested in Tacoma Junction if there were leasable space there. So if there's empty space, but it's not leasable right now.
Good, thanks. Council members, Snipper, Clay, Schultz, and Robinson.
I just have a quick ask, which is, to me, one of the most important contributions you can make to the city is to use the information you've gathered and the perspectives of the people who you've talked to to thoroughly discuss all the issues. Even if you, even if it's, you know, you have a recommendation in a different direction, it's important to lay out the arguments for the other side as well, just so that, you know, you guys have the knowledge, you've talked to the people, you can do the full description discussion of issues, and that will help frame any future discussion in a very important way. So I urge you, the classic, of course, is roundabouts, but there are many others as well. You know, please take the time to give us the full picture of what you've gathered and the people you've talked to.
That's our intention, and I'll say that you might get more than you would wish. You might get two recommendations. It's unclear whether they would be put forward as a majority and a minority recommendation. You might get two recommendations on a particular issue.
But you're saying discussion is the.
It will, it's an attempt to reflect what we've learned from the community and how we feel ourselves. I wanted to say something.
Well, I was just going to say, Ruben, if you just look at the outline that Seth has provided.
Yes, I'm very happy.
Can you just imagine those spaces being filled in?
Yep.
That'll take you between now and Christmas to read.
All right, Councilmember Clay.
Well, I want to thank everybody for the work that they've done on the Junction Task Force. It's been 2005 since I worked on the Tassee Task Force, and I know what a job it is and how much work and effort everybody puts into it, and I particularly appreciate all of that. And I have received feedback from two of the three people that I have appointed to the council about the work and activities that they're engaged in. So I'm glad that the Ward Two people are participating. I noted in the paper the other day that the Fenton Market, which is something that you guys were looking at, is having some challenges with its spaces in Silver Spring. I thought that was an interesting article in light of the fact that you guys would be talking here, and that I do think that it would be interesting for, or it would be interesting, it would be good for the council to talk about that, activities in that space now that the fire department is not utilizing it. We talked about interim uses, and I don't want to throw that off on the task force because you guys are doing your thing, but I think that maybe the council could come back around and talk about that. And I also want to support Councilmember Snipper's comments about vetting all the ideas. I guess I'm less concerned that you rank all the ideas. I think it's fine if you have a majority opinion and that you put that forward. What I think is important is to flesh out all of the voices, even if they're minority voices, and include those in the report for others to see because it provides legitimacy to the report. And so regardless of how majority folks on the committee feel about things, if there are people left in the community, even if it's 20% of the people in the community, that would be a significant number of people in the community who felt like the issues weren't vetted, it'll be hard to bring them back around in support of whatever final conclusion that we come to. And I think that that's really key for this process. It's important for me as a council member to be able to go to the report and say, you know, here's all the information about this, to be able to show that it was thoroughly vetted and reviewed. And so I would just ask that you keep that in mind going forward, and I do appreciate everything that you're doing in that arena to make sure that people feel heard and that that is represented. I thank you.
I'm just going to say one thing for the record, because I was on Tassee with you, Colleen and Seth, and, you know, and Barb very gallantly and vigilantly came to all of our meetings, and there were a lot of meetings, but we have probably had twice as many meetings with this task force.
And I am aware of that, and I appreciate that. Don't I say better you than me this round?
On just one point, the prioritization of ideas. I think that we do need to sequence ideas. Some things would make more sense, especially bigger things, to take care of first, and then other things, once you have taken care of the big things, that eliminates the possibility of some small things, and it opens up other ones as being more desirable. So I think we would make an effort to sequence the ideas that we put forward.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you for the huge amount of time that all of you have put into it, dedication and concern. It's, I'm absolutely certain it's going to be of invaluable help to the City Council. So I'm really, really looking forward to the report. And I guess I want to agree with Council, Snipper and Councilmember Clay in saying that, what they said, and that is, is that it's really important for us to be able to know that you have looked into all the nooks and crannies that you have and have, that you've explored various issues and to get all that information out. And I think perhaps, say, unlike some of the other task forces, the environmental task force, where there may have been certainly no less easier, but at least, but you probably had more of a consensus about what needed to be done than in perhaps this case, because there are so many issues, and some of the issues and the recommendations may conflict. It may say, well, if we solve the, come up with a particular solution for the vacant lot, then that prevents a different kind of a solution for the traffic or vehicle flow or something like that. So maybe the best that you can do is point in the directions and say that this is, these are possible scenarios, and if you want, you know, you need to re-rank order them, that's fine. If you need to identify them as, you know, most people felt this way about such and such, and fewer people felt that way, that's fine too. That is all boils down to basic information that I think will be helpful to us. One question that I had was, to what extent have you been able to have a useful discourse with the landlords of the commercial properties, particularly the ones on Carroll Avenue, but in any of the commercial properties in there? Are you basically satisfied that you've gotten through to these, to the property owner, the commercial property owners, or has that been a source of frustration?
Has anyone personally been involved in that? Yeah, Kessler, yeah, Carl Kessler passed away, and their family involved and so on. Yeah, I think the answer is that work is incomplete, and we've actually had some discussions about the extent that we should be talking to the property owners. Yeah, here, I'm about to say this in public on, you know, the web and the TV, you know, if we start asking questions, for instance, of the Turner family that owns the building where the co-op is, and start talking about, well, what if certain businesses did this or that, you know, are we doing things that we shouldn't be doing? So, and then further, in a way, we've had this discussion, is it our business as a task force to find out what an individual business owner's plans involve? I'd say actually that's more an OTVA type of thing for an organization. Okay, so here's another one. One scenario for development, putting a building into city lot would be, you know, the city could acquire adjacent properties, Johnny's and Healy Surgeons, the two auto places, and create a larger parcel. You know, I don't think it's really our business to be making recommendations that relate to viable existing businesses and so on. Instead, what we came up with, and I think that you'll probably see this, is that when, if the city, I'll say if the city invites development proposals for the city lot, that the city invite proposals that would include the developers acquiring the additional properties, the adjacent properties, in order to create a larger parcel. So we're, yes, our work and outreach to the property owners is incomplete for various reasons, including that I would say that we're not completely clear even now to the extent that we should be engaging with them. I'm sorry if that's not quite a satisfying answer.
Yeah, no, I can tell that it's probably not a satisfactory answer, but that's because there can't be one at this point in time. And my question really was more about making sure that the property, commercial property owners understand what it is the task force has been told to do, and is aware of it, and isn't going to come, some of them aren't going to come back at some point in time and say, "We never heard about this process," or, you know, "I couldn't get anybody to talk to me," or stuff like that. I just want to make sure that they are recognized as, that they know that they are stakeholders and that they are going to be part of, you know, the future of this whole process. That's basically what I was looking for.
I can address part of that. Some property owners have been talked to, and for some of the reasons Seth gave, others have not, primarily for the reason that we didn't want inadvertently lose strategy or, you know, play hands in a way that would not be beneficial to the current businesses or for the overall development scheme that we might like to see. But if I could give a specific example in regard to the properties we were talking about earlier, Mr. Olaf's property, he and his management company have been totally non-responsive to residents, OTVA, everyone who contacted them for a very, very long time. He is now engaged. He attended the facade money grants in the spring. He is talking to people. He's engaged, so we did have an effect. And that goes back to the very early, what have we accomplished so far? And I think we have made progress on that. And I don't think it's a complete job at this point.
Well, that sounds promising, and that's the sort of thing I was just, that's exactly the kind of thing I was wondering about. So thank you for that.
I'm just going to repeat that, but I think it's important. We've concentrated on trying to improve and take advantage of opportunities that currently exist rather than try to reconfigure existing businesses. Does that make?
No, the only thing I want to say is that I basically see what, when you've finished your work and you've handed it off to us, is that basically we're going to pick up from where you've left off to try to figure out what all the possible options are and what is the best to be, what are the best, because we're just ultimately going to have to make decisions. And so we're just going to carry that process further that you will have started.
You will not be in a position to make a decision on October 1st about this, because, well, you know.
No, I understand.
One issue that council members, I remember Councilmember Clay in particular bringing up at our previous report to the council quite a number of months ago, was traffic flow through the junction. As we indicated, we've had discussions with the State Highway Administration with several parties, but our particular contact is Cedric Ward in the District Three office, and they're looking at the re-timing of the signals. It's not always easy to get information out of them, especially in a timely fashion. And any kind of decision about reconfiguration of traffic through the junction, reconfiguration of signals, streets, whatever, should wait until the work that they're already doing is completed, and work that they might not have already been doing, but now they realize they need to be doing. You know, then they need to do counts of traffic flows and all that kind of stuff, the kind of stuff that, for that matter, the Kittleson Associates people did in 2006 when they were looking at the possibility of traffic circles, sorry, of roundabouts in the junction. So you're not going to be able to act on, like, that key question on October 1st.
No, I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Seth, I want to say that when I yawned, you caught me yawning a little while ago.
I didn't see that.
Well, it didn't have anything to do with you guys at all, because I rode over to the CNO canal today and met my daughter and rode back to here, and so I was on my bike for 20 miles, yeah, so I'm pooped. But it doesn't mean I'm not going to have a few comments. Thank you all for being here and all the work that you're doing to date. I have a couple of comments and then a kind of a clarification to follow up on what Mayor Williams said. And because you guys, I mean, you're the citizens, but you're sort of super citizens because you're a task force and all that, and you can open the communication, yeah, super citizen, and translate between these cultures that we are all talking about, like the citizens themselves, so they don't get, feel blindsided, and our own staff and other staffs and the development community and the business culture. And so when this gets delivered, that, I hope, you'll set the stage for that in continued communication or kind of translation. And get to some specifics or at least map out ways we can do things, like with our own staff or with other staffs. And then you brought, now I'll circle back to the very first thing you said, or one of the first things you said, which was the environmental problems underneath the Olaf property. And you said, "Can you please do something?" And what went through my head was, well, who's, who's, where are the pieces sequentially? Like, is Mr. Olaf, has he been informed or has he been, and you don't have to answer this right now necessarily, but he knows the nature of the environmental problems, and he then therefore, before he can rent, has to make some remediation? And does he know that? And if he knows that, is he at odds with certain staff members either within our city or at the county level, or as you mentioned, the state level? So we need more detail, kind of, when you ask about, "Can you please do this specific thing?" We need to know, you know, do we go talk to Mr. Olaf and try to, or do we go talk to the state because they're not being responsive to Mr. Olaf? Or do we talk, you know, is it a permitting issue? So the greater the level of detail, I think, within your capabilities, the better it is for us in the end.
I mean, Dan, it's an ongoing process. It's, and some of our task force members have gotten involved in this, and of course there have been, there's been at least one community meeting about it all. Mr. Olaf's totally involved, the staff of the state agencies totally involved. We're just saying that if the city staff people got involved, because as a city, our, your priority would be to move it along as quickly as possible.
Of course.
Because it does no one any good to have them sitting empty.
Well, I think that our staff needs to know, or maybe they would find out, what's the nature of, what's the problem? It's like, it's like there's a guy sitting in a French restaurant and he's saying, "Gendarme, gendarme." Maybe the chief will appreciate this, I don't know. "Gendarme, gendarme." And the waiter comes over and says, "What is your problem, sir?" "I need a gendarme, there seems to be a holdup in the kitchen." Like, what's the holdup here? Is it, is it that, is it that Mr. Olaf wants to do the work but feels frustrated? Or is it that he doesn't want to do the work and needs to be motivated? Or is it something else that I, that I'm not hearing? That's, I guess, and I don't, that's why I say you don't necessarily have to answer it now because I don't want to impugn Mr. Olaf or anybody else that doesn't need to be, you know, that won't serve the process. And you've been sensitive to, you know, what people's situations are, but.
I think our feeling is that this is at a point where we can hand it off. The properties are posted for environmental cleanup. There are posters on the doors. And there are, I can't give you the name of the agency involved, but there are agencies involved. And when there are agencies outside of the Tacoma Park City Government involved, personally, I believe that the best contact for them is the corresponding city agency rather than a citizens group. So I think that because it is a recognized problem, the landlord certainly knows that the problem is there, there are governmental agencies involved, it's at a point where it can be handed off. And handing it off to city staff is probably going to be the most effective way to make anything happen.
You mean, you mean handing it off, and you mean saying, "City staff, please contact Mr. Olaf so that he can walk through the state level of bureaucratic things more effectively?" Is that truly what you're saying?
I would say, I'm sorry.
I'm a little confused on this, that's all. I'm just trying to get clarity.
Yeah, I think we'll need to look into it. City clerk was just kind of Googling. Apparently, he entered into what is referred to as a voluntary, into the voluntary cleanup program with the state. And it looks like he was accepted into the program in August of 2008 and required to put together what is known as a response, a response action plan, that one had to be developed. And it doesn't look like there's been much activity since that time. We can certainly make some calls to M.D. And Darryl, do you know anything about it from the chance I've got? And try to find out a little bit more.
Sometimes by asking questions, you can get things moving. That's, you know, it can be as simple as that, but, but the task force is not in the question, in the position right now. We're not the people who should be asking the questions.
Got it. Okay, that's very good. I hope that clarifies it for others, it certainly does for me.
And, you know, the city does wield certain regulatory, you know, enforcement, enforcement possibilities. I'll stop there.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Good work, guys. Anything else based on what I said? Or shall we?
Councilmember Robinson. So it's very clear to me that you want the city staff engaged, so I just would want to make sure that the city manager feels like the majority of the council would like the city staff engaged and they can talk to the task force members and gain any additional information. And I think I would personally like to know if there was anything that we need to do as a council in terms of pushing the state delegation on this issue. Often I realize that once you get, deal with the state bureaucracy, it can often be helpful to have a push from the state delegation. So as you gather that information, that would be helpful. And I hope we can move forward to that as quickly as possible. The question I have has to do with developer outreach. Not that you would go and solicit developers to work on the project or anything like that, but more, has there been any inquiry into just talking to developers about the viability of the space? Maybe people like Ethan Landis or Level Two Development that's doing the Eco Park place that, you know, you guys know, I could come up with other names, but just to get a perspective because I think that can be helpful sometimes. People have, you know, a vision of what could be at a site and it's just not economically viable. So I'd just be interested to hear if there's, there's any of that lined up.
Yes. So we did have a conversation with Bruce Levin, who owns the property where the old Tacoma Ace Hardware is and had much grander plans for redevelopment of that space prior to the hardware stores moving in. He has also put up a building on the other side of the metro station. So we talked to him. We've talked about talking, but we had a meeting slated for last week. My across-the-street neighbor, so happens, Jeff Topchick, works for a company that does just this kind of development, usually on a larger scale, JEBR, I think it is, in Rockville. He was going to meet with us and then John Ursiolo also. John Ursiolo knows more than any other property owner in Tacoma Park about the needs of all Tacoma, demand for all Tacoma businesses and so on. That fell through for personal reasons on the part of the people that we are inviting. So that's, it's on our list to do more of that. Then Kay reminds me also, we had a discussion early on in the task force about engaging consultants, whether we would ask the council to let us engage a consultant or not, and we decided not to do that. But we did reach out to consulting companies to ask them about the kind of services that they would offer that would be applicable here. And we intend to report on that in case the council wants to engage a consultant. I'm not sure we'll make any recommendation about that or not. I think that's yet another area where opinion on the task force is divided.
Super. Well, thanks for.
And let me recognize, council member Schultz, I believe, but you had named some people that we could talk to for that consultant outreach.
Yeah, I did. I think one of those, somebody talked to and he was not interested. The other one, Jim Abdo, done a lot of creative infill development, D.C. and Arlington, I still think would be, not necessarily you'd need him to as a consultant, but just to pick his brains like you're trying to do with some of the others. Because there is a certain, a genre of developers who are not into the big tall buildings and all that sort of stuff. They're more interested in the low-scale infill kind of projects or restoration projects that would be appropriate for the junction.
By the way, on the topic of environmental cleanup, there's been a lot of speculation about what is underneath the paved surface of the city lot. One person whom I named just a couple of minutes ago, who's been around for a long time, even alleged that a local business had been in the habit for many years of dumping garbage on that property and then it essentially got paved over. Maybe there's rubble under there that would make it difficult to dig down and put any kind of, you know, that would limit the possibilities for a building there. So even the information about what is underneath that pavement slab is, it's mixed and there need to be evaluations of that too. And that's beyond what we can do or ask to do at this moment.
Super, I just want to say thank you. I know that, you know, this is a tough issue. There's been task force and committees who looked at this before. And if it were easy to solve a lot of the issues, they would have been solved before. So thanks for all your hard work on us, I appreciate it.
And maybe I can just wrap this up by echoing councilmember Wright's last comment. The scope of the issues that you've looked at is pretty broad and the diligence that you've had with the various tasks that you've undertaken and that broad scope of the things that you're looking at is to be commended. And really appreciate all the hard work that you've put in so far and that you're going to continue to put in in the, in the two months that you've got till, till September 30th. And I appreciate how hard it is to deal with a lot of these issues in the junction. My first exposure to issues in the junction was about 20 years ago when I was a co-president of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association and was dealing with traffic issues in the junction. And councilmember Robinson and I were involved in that at that point. And it was, I think it was about 1990 or '91. And I know that there were previous efforts even before I was involved with the development on the lot and what might happen there. So that there have been a lot of efforts, a lot of people over decades to try and figure out the best possibilities for the junction. And there was even the last Tacoma Junction Committee that I was council liaison to many years ago. And there was the TCDC to try and, try and look into things and the Charette and just on and on and on. You can, you know, you could write a book about it. And so I appreciate the time and effort that you all have put in and look forward to seeing the final report and working with that and to see if we can get somewhere on this yet again. And just want to thank you all very much.
Thank you. I'll just mention that we do post our meeting minutes. We're up to sometime in May, I believe. But in any case, at tacomajunction.org. Tacomajunction.org also has links to a number of documents and resources that we've collected, some articles that have covered the task force and so on. So we're trying to operate as openly as we can and share the information about what we're doing.
And the clerk has all that information, so that the city website provides a link to that? Good. Thanks all. We will move along to the regular meeting items. We have, I believe, eight different things to vote on. All of them require roll call votes. So don't let me just say, all those in favor, please say aye. It's not going to happen. Everything this evening is a roll call vote. So we will move to the first one. And I think we can move through these in fairly short order since we've discussed most of them at great length. There are, the first seven are second reading ordinances. So we've had work sessions, we've had first readings, and then we have a consent agenda. So we'll see if we can move through these with some rapidity. The first one is a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to increase certain fines and fees.
Move.
Second.
Any council discussion? Any public discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Agenda item number three is a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title 12, Trees and Vegetation.
Move.
Move. Second.
Any council comments?
I just had a question about whether, I know we asked for some changes to this. I just wanted to make sure those changes were.
You want to highlight those? Maybe public work director can do that?
Yes, the two points that were raised at the last, the first reading was to change the, the way the preplanting credits were described in the ordinance itself and to keep them with the property versus with the property owner. So that's been changed to reflect that. And also, city attorney tried to meet the request based on having the notice for the real estate transaction a little more noticeable. So she made an effort to put some clarifying language in there. As we discussed it with her, we are hampered somewhat by there is a structure of the notice itself and it's not really a flyer or a kind of a PR piece. So it makes it a little more challenging to come up with eye-catching verbiage. But that was her recommendation based on her understanding of the council's request.
Any other questions? Councilmember Clay.
Thank you for all of your work on this and for making the changes and for everything that you do for the city.
Any further questions or comments? Any public comment? Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Lab, your favorite piece, Elliot. I want to find out, does that affect if anyone wants to plant a non-native tree in their, in their yard or in their front place? You know, like a mimosa tree or some other tree that's non-native? Does that affect that at all?
The ordinance itself doesn't restrict planting of trees by a property owner on private property. Existing city code restricts what you can plant in the city right of way. That has to be with permission of the city and the city harbors. But any individual that wants to plant anything, there isn't any restriction in the current city code that would restrict planting non-native trees. There are some language about undesirable species that require they be contained and controlled, but.
Yeah, exactly. Mimosa happens to be one of my favorite trees, by the way. I love it. I love all trees, but I love the mimosa also. Thank you for letting me share.
Any other public comments? I'll just note that I've heard arguments recently that there is no such thing as native species because it all depends on when you define when native started. And if you go back far enough, nothing is native.
Very hard to handle here.
Okay, will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. Second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title 13, Vehicles and Traffic Speed Humps.
Move. Second.
I just wanted to say anything on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, there was a slight change that was made to the guidelines after first reading. It wasn't one that was discussed at the council meeting itself. But in looking over, and I think, I can't remember now, I'm totally drawing a blank. Someone raised the question about what about raised intersections? I think it was a resident in Hilltop neighborhood that's interested in raised crosswalk. Their reading of that particular section that addressed the distance from a stop sign or an intersection included all forms of traffic calming devices, whereas the intention was to be specific to speed hump. So we just put clarifying sentence in there that said, the distance of a, distance restriction from an intersection or a stop sign is related to speed humps only. Because there are certain types of traffic control measures that are intended to be in an intersection, like a raised intersection or a raised crosswalk.
Thanks for that clarification. Any council questions, comments? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, council members, city administrator, Erwin Mack, executive director, coming on in Crossroads. I speak from a different perspective, though, having just finished a term as chairman of the Montgomery County Pedestrian Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, thinking that I would be offered because there are no exceptions made typically. I was honored, however, to have inquiry made through the county executive's office to ask if I would continue to serve if an exception were made. The county executive has chosen to do so, the county council has voted to do so, and I'm on for another term as chairman of the county committee. This has been a pleasure because while I've lived in Tacoma Park, I thought as I've worked at Tacoma Park since 1977, I have a Tacoma Park address, I don't live in Tacoma Park. But I never tell people I live in Long Branch, I tell people I live in Tacoma Park. And Tacoma Park is my city, if you will, because of my years of working here. However, on the city, on the county committee, pardon me, we have 17 people who express significant opinions about various things. And one of them that came up last year was traffic calming devices. And I'm going to share just a brief item in regards to what you're going to be voting on momentarily, which I regret that I didn't have time to really get involved in analyzing it, even though council member Schultz was kind enough to make me aware of what's happening. The city of Rockville has chosen to use a new device to minimize the inconvenience to bicyclists, motorcyclists, and emergency vehicles of all types by going to what is, you're going to see here is a traffic lump, L-U-M-P. The dimensions on the second page, and I won't go into detail on that because both council member Schultz and Ms. Danes have the information that the city of Rockville has been very kind in sharing, including the fact that Arlington is way out front in the development of this kind of a thing. My point being that Tacoma Park shouldn't be a city of ridicule, being called the city of bump city, which it is. In the parade this last year, I had the privilege of taking Mr. Schultz and his wife in my car, I had to power over the bumps on Maple Avenue going downhill to get over them. And yet I understand the reason for people not wishing speeding in front of them. This device can be modified to allow speed bumps, such as ugly as they are, to accommodate by using the diagram on the second page to modify those speed bumps, so you don't have to remove them. But where new ones are being considered, this is the way to go based on the research done by John Britton, who is a council member in the city of Rockville and who chaired our subcommittee on traffic calming issues. So I simply pass this to you in saying, as you rewrite what you're doing, would you consider the latest innovations that exist? And you'll find that rather than being a city of ridicule, you'll be part of the leaders, if you will, joining Rockville and Arlington in saying, there's a better way of doing it than just because bumps slow people down. Maybe there's a nicer way of allowing emergency vehicles, bicyclists. vehicles, bicyclists, motorcyclists to go through, yet impeding speeding traffic. My wife and I had the privilege of spending three weeks in Europe just recently, and if you're talking about roundabouts, you have never seen roundabouts until you go to England. There aren't hundreds of them, there are thousands of them. And they're well patrolled, if you will, not only by the police, but actually by the goodwill of the people who use them. Courtesies are extended once education has been brought to the people who drive. And it's another way of keeping traffic calming methods. But I simply wanted to bring this speed lump to you, say that there may be another terminology that ought to go into the amendment that you're about to pass, to say that there isn't, what we have isn't complete, there's more to it. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thanks for providing us with this. It's very helpful to know, because we've been talking about alternatives for how we can accommodate various types of vehicles, yet still get the compliance with the speed enforcement. So it's very helpful. I would observe that we may not be ridiculed for our speed bumps, but if we are, it's better than being ridiculed for our humps.
We've been through that language of the humps, and some cities are withdrawing the terminology, humps, for rather mundane reasons.
Right. Thanks. Any further public comment? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We're on to the next one, which is item number five. This is second reading ordinance rescinding the ordinance authorizing the installation of speed humps on the 100 block of Sherman Avenue, which is ordinance 2010-44.
Move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments? Any public comments?
Yep, my name's Mr. Pat Lovelace, again, in the area, 7620 Maple Avenue. Just wanted to let you know that my back is going to be happy, you know, with not as many speed bumps going by, so I'd like to see you rescind that really high one on Maple Avenue. Because every time I drive, every time I ride over it with somebody, or a cab or something like that, ka-punk, ka-punk, my vertebrae don't like it. So there's a big one on Maple Avenue I'd like to see ground down at least somewhat. If you rescind that one, I'll be halfway down on the avenue. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That one passes unanimously. We'll now move along to agenda item number six, which is a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.12 Administrative Regulations. And let me just note that Councilmember Schultz has reviewed this in depth and suggested a number of improvements. And we will be taking up those changes when we come back in September, so that we can clarify the language in this. But we wanted to, since we had been through all of these things and got to this point with the first reading on this, we wanted to get this cleaned up, since it was a longstanding issue, and then we'll come right back and deal with those others as well.
I move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We'll move to agenda item number seven, which is a second reading ordinance awarding a contract for solar power installation through a power purchase agreement.
Move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments? Any public comments? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We'll move to agenda item number eight, which is a second reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with a consultant to assist with matters related to the proposed relocation of Washington Methodist Hospital.
Move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Final item on our regular session agenda is the consent agenda. Since there are seven items, I will just mention them very briefly. They are a resolution adopting facade advisory board design guidelines, another resolution authorizing city manager to sign a debris management memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County, resolution providing for an appointment to the Essex Commission, another for appointments to the Arts and Humanities Commission, another providing for our summer recess, a resolution ratifying a collective bargaining agreement with UFCW Local 400, and requiring us to do a roll call, a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a replacement chipper. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Sorry, could you repeat it?
No.
Move the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll take the roll call vote.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We moved through in fairly short order, effectively fourteen items. And we will take a short break and come back for our work session discussion Final item on the agenda this evening, before we adjourn until the day after Labor Day, and that is a discussion of where we want to go with sidewalks. And I'm assuming that the city manager or her designee will want to talk about a few items here. Let me just point out that we've got a list of things that are of some urgency, but what we, in the end, would like to do is come up with a policy direction for how staff can go forward with looking at how sidewalks get added in new locations. That's one of the things that would be very helpful, and we have some disparity of processes going forward, and staff would be well-served by having direction from us on how we want to proceed. So if the city manager would like to start this, and we've got a list of questions, and we'll see if we can get through this in a reasonable amount of time.
Staff will certainly do as part of the job that I hope to have. And to address where Tag Team is tonight, I'll just make some opening remarks. Back in 2009, the city received a report from Tool Design Group, and basically, I think there's been some confusion about what the scope of their work was. It was basically to identify where there were gaps in existing sidewalk lengths, where there were just simply no sidewalks at all, to basically provide some data in terms of various ADA problems that might exist with curb ramps, with sidewalks, and where there might be some obstructions to the construction of new sidewalks, things such as slopes. The council spent quite a bit of time looking at that study. Part of what came out of it was a proposed tier ranking system, where it sort of looked at the ease of construction, access points to major community facilities. And the council ultimately adopted a resolution that, in essence, adopted that tier ranking system. It wasn't an inflexible system. It certainly provided some discretion in terms of consolidating work for cost efficiencies or for other reasons. As we've noted on a number of occasions, state highways were not included in that evaluation, only sidewalks that were along city-controlled streets. We did a number of sidewalk-related work last fiscal year, and we do have $300,000 in the current budget for FY12 for ADA sidewalk retrofit work, and $575,000 for either design or construction of new sidewalk. As we talked about during the budget process, most of the new sidewalk-related work was envisioned to occur in Ward Six and in Ward Two. We have used sort of different processes to date in the case of Ward Six, which is a little bit further along. There was actually a considerable amount of design work that has been done. And then we started having community meetings once we sort of had a product to roll out. In Ward Two, we've taken a somewhat different approach, and we basically have had, I think, several community meetings, Councilmember Clay. And we have not yet done design work.
Well, that kind of makes a slight correction.
That's Central.
Yeah, there's a 30 percent.
Design on Central Avenue, because it's on a different process with HCD than through public works. That's correct. I misspoke. There are two funding sources. Most of the work that has been done to date is being paid for with speed camera funds. In the case of the design work with Central, and also, we've looked at doing some funding for Wildwood and with Hilltop out of the Safe Routes to School. The Safe Routes to School process is a little bit lengthier. We are not allowed by the terms of the program to actually use the same indefinite quantities contract that Public Works operates under. We will actually have to go out and do a separate bid for the actual construction work with indefinite quantities. I see Councilmember Clay rolling her eyes, and we would agree with you on that. It's a lot of extra staff work with really no productive benefit. I think, as was noted by Ms. Taber, I think she was hopeful that there would actually be a process outlined tonight. I think it's been frustrating for everyone not to have a more clearly defined process, and I think that's what staff is hoping to have, at least a glimmer of a process, or at least some direction from council by the end of this evening. What we tried to do on the cover sheet is just lay out some questions that might be helpful to the council as you kind of think through this issue. Suzanne, you put together the cover sheet, did sort of lay out the issues in sort of a time-sensitive order. Did want to just clarify something on Central Avenue. I spent some time today with Alana. What we actually did is forward to the state a number of possible sidewalk locations, probably more locations than we actually have money to do. We certainly won't know that until we get the results of the indefinite quantities bid. As Councilmember Clay noted, Central Avenue has had 30 percent in design done. She can certainly speak to this more than I can. There is a sense that the neighborhood response may be more lukewarm. So at this point, the city staff has stopped any work on the design for Central pending any direction from the council. We have, will be soon issuing the proposal for the indefinite quantities contract. We will see when that comes in, exactly what the unit prices are, and how much of either Hilltop, Wildwood, or Central could be covered by that. In talking to Alana, it doesn't necessarily have to be a decision this evening. I was unaware of that when Suzie and I were talking about the cover sheet. But we are probably about two months away. Once those indefinite quantity contract prices come in, we will need fairly quick direction from the council in terms of what streets we want to move forward on with the Safe Routes to School money. There is sometimes sensitivity to that issue, just to make sure that we can actually expend the funds in the allowable time, and that we don't have to return any money to the state. I think from a staff perspective, we would encourage the council, despite the funding source, to sort of look at Central in somewhat the same bucket that you're looking at other streets in terms of how resident, you know, input factors into your decision-making process. The next one, two, three, four, about five bullets after that, were all a series of questions that I think staff thought might be helpful to you as you work through this issue. And more than anything, what we're trying to get to is, what is the process the council wants to follow? We would encourage, as a staff, I think, a process that is uniform, that it does not vary from ward to ward, which is not to say that every street is the same. There may be, when you look at the map of proposed work for FY12, and Suzie can certainly speak to some of the ADA-related issues, but there may be certain pathways that you, or connections that you consider to be critical, or that may be necessary to meet the requirements of ADA. In your mind, that could have a different standing, perhaps, at streets that, you know, maybe don't have the same importance from a connectivity standpoint. And that's ultimately, I think, a matter of council judgment, but for any ADA requirements. I'd like to have Daryl maybe talk a little bit about kind of what she's dealing with. She is really the person who's on the front lines, I think, in terms of trying to deal with sidewalk construction, and kind of speak to where she's at in that process, and what I guess she hopes to get out of tonight's discussion.
Sure, sure. Well, I think ideally, one of the things that's happened in every meeting that we've had is people say, so where do you look from here? What's the process? Is this a done deal or not? To which I give a standard canned response, which is the council's law record is saying they want to get sidewalks where sidewalks are wanted. However, they've also spoken to the potential of an overriding community need for a sidewalk that will be installed, even in an area if there isn't necessarily general support in those areas that have been identified for the network connectivity. As Barb has mentioned, we have carried through in two different processes. In the Ward Six process, we had put before the council the priority streets identified both through Safe Routes in the Tool Design Group, and we moved them into design. And then we rolled those out to the neighborhood. What can be said in favor of that is, people had very specific things to look at and review. We could really get down to clarity about what this would mean, both for in front of your house, or on the route that your kid walks to school. So because we had the drawings in place and the survey work done, it gave people something very specific to react to. I like this, I don't like that. This neighbor won't go for it, that one will. You know, we could really get down to some specifics. But at the end of the day, at the end of those meetings, and we had a series of five different meetings to discuss these sidewalks, there was some sense that there was either ambivalence or support. There were certainly some folks that spoke in opposition as well. But as a staff member, I couldn't really say, where are we proceeding? Where are we going forward? In the Ward Two experience, what I hoped to get out of those meetings, and I think we were marginally successful, was just try to demystify the sidewalk process. There'd been a lot of information thrown out about what was or wasn't a possibility related to the impact it would have on private property. So we just tried to provide general information about where this came from and why, what are the factors that we had to look at relative to sidewalk construction. And probably first and foremost, remind people that the city would be following its own rules and regulations regarding stormwater, tree protection, tree replacement, as private property owners would be for this project. So that we just tried to clarify and provide some real specific answers to the general questions about what it would mean. But we couldn't get down to the specifics about which side of the street, who's affected, what the costs would be, because we were in, you know, kind of hypothetical mode. And so, you know, there's a benefit to getting down to a little more specifics in that it clarifies the discussion. However, the downside is people can sometimes feel like it's a steamroller, it's a train moving forward, and it's already left the station, and you're out of luck. One thing that I am not clear about, and what we're hoping we can get to, is, does the council want to create a process, either on both ends, where it can be vetoed by the community if we put out these priorities, and what that process would be? Or is there the kind of alternative to that, is what kind of formal touching base with the neighborhood do you want staff to do in order to move forward once we've had these community meetings and we've had these discussions? Is the council interested in data, survey data, responses pro and con, majority, three-quarters percent, you know, what kind of things might that look like, or how might that operate? You know, what's the venue or the avenue going to be for people to voice their either support or opposition? And of course, concurrent with that is, who gets to vote? Is it just if it's in front of your house, those are the folks we're tallying the votes for? Or is it the people who may use it that aren't on that street, but they feel a need to use a sidewalk or want a sidewalk for their kids, or other uses to get to and from places? So those are pretty broad questions, but those are the kind of things, based on the meetings that we've had, that would be helpful to have a sense of where the council is, particularly if there's a formal process that we can establish, so that we can move this forward. Otherwise, we're just going to be running in circles. And for folks who are strongly in opposition to sidewalks, they can keep fueling this. And I must say, and it may come across one-sided, but there has been a sense that folks in support of sidewalks are really feeling like they need to lay low. support of sidewalks are really feeling like they need to lay low, because the rhetoric has gotten such that it's become kind of a toxic issue within neighborhoods. So I think that it begs for a process from the council so that we can kind of put it back on neutral ground again and people can have a process to follow. And then, you know, some civility and some calmness can feed back into this issue.
Before we turn to the council, I just weren't hoping that Suzanne could maybe clarify just a few points about ADA and what is required, because that may be helpful as she starts with deliberations.
Sure. One of the things that I did want to go on record, I heard Catherine Tunis talk about that ADA does not require new sidewalks, and that's not completely true. The bulk of the work is on if there's an existing sidewalk and it does not meet the kind of slope or non-destructive nature that you need to have for a good ADA sidewalk, then it needs to be corrected. However, there's also a mandate on the local government to ensure that connections are made to public buildings or to other key locations. There's a little bit of discretion about what those, how extensive those connections need to be. One of the -- but nevertheless, certainly towards public buildings and that kind of thing, we absolutely do need to provide sidewalks. And so if there's not one, you do need to put it in. We may get a little bit more information tomorrow when the U.S. Access Board releases its guidelines, new guidelines on sidewalks for localities. And so we'll be very interested in hearing the new information. The executive director of the Access Board, we're very fortunate to be in the D.C. area, is willing to come and meet with us, give us a training on what's involved and what the criteria are and what the guidelines call for. And so I think that's something to look forward to. But I did want to get it on the record that while most of the work with the ADA is correcting existing sidewalks and the problems that are there, there is some challenge for us in identifying where some new sidewalks may need to be installed. Besides what the ADA requires, there's also, I think, a general sense of us about talking about connectivity in our community. And I think that's a really general topic, and so it does require the input from a number of people in the community to get that determined through the transition plan, which isn't done, but needs to be done.
I wanted to get a clarification on one or two things and then I'll go to my colleagues. We talk about the sidewalks, the state highway sidewalks were not evaluated as part of the Tool Design Group study. And there's been some comments about that from members of the public that we've talked about that a little bit as we've kind of gone through some of the sidewalk discussions. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that when that was done, our understanding was different from what our understanding is now about who's responsible for repair work on state highway sidewalks. My recollection is that our understanding was state highway put them in, state highway maintains them, state highway in the last period of time has said, "No, we put in the initial and after that it's up to the local jurisdiction to maintain." Is my recollection of the timeline correct?
That was certainly staff's understanding back several years ago. I think it's fair to say that the issue of sidewalk maintenance along state routes is a moving target, because even a state highway will tell us, "We don't maintain them." Direct your attention to New Hampshire Avenue where they've just, without any discussion with us, and in fact, they've created several traffic problems for us on the service roads on New Hampshire Avenue, because they widened the sidewalks and narrowed our service roads where we have parking lanes and our trash trucks can't get through. So they not only did take an active approach, they replaced every square foot of sidewalk just about between 410 and up, I believe, Holton Lane, if not further. So there are cases where they say they don't unless they do. We're also waiting for them to start a correction to the crosswalks right in front of this building at Philadelphia and Maple Avenue. And we went through quite a little bit of excitement trying to make sure they didn't replace the crosswalk that we already made ADA compliant as part of their process. So we think we've got that under wraps, but you never know until the contractor shows up what exactly they're going to do. We have them on record as saying they're only going to address the other three, not the one in front of this building. So, probably speaking too long, but it has been a moving target with state highway and whether they will or won't do work on sidewalks along state routes. It's, I think, largely a funding issue. If they have a pot of money that they don't know what else to do with and it's geared towards concrete work, they'll put it into sidewalks.
And if I may, I mean, having a similar kind of evaluation like the Tool Design Group did with the other sidewalks of the state highways is something that we could fund out of Speed Camera lines. So that's one of the things that is a project that we could undertake.
So my thought is, on the whole state highway issue and the training on the ADA requirements, that it might be, those might be fairly easy ones to just kind of say what it is that we want, get those out of the way and go to the rest, that it probably would be a good idea to know the potential cost for assessing ADA compliance and need for new sidewalk installation along state highways so that we have that information to go along with the database. And I think it would be good for the council to, you know, kind of, to give a sense to the staff so that we can, so that they can know how to move forward on that and provide us with the information on what that would cost. And then it would be simple for us to say whether we want the training session and just knock those two bullets off real quick. So do people want staff to come back with information on funding information for study for state highway sidewalks?
Funding for a study for state highway?
To essentially duplicate, as much as we feel it's necessary, the Tool Design Group work on the sidewalks on state highways so that we have, as part of our inventory of the roots and the connectivity and everything else, what the status of state highway sidewalks. People had lights on for previous comments, so I'll take hands on that one for questions. Councilmember Seaman and then Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly think it would be helpful to have some analysis or assessment of the sidewalks along state highways. But I would back off on saying, such as we had from our sidewalk survey, because I felt at the time that that passed, I raised objections that I thought that survey was flawed, and I continue it as it gets flawed. And it assessed things from the perspective of the grant that funded that survey, not for the broader issue of pedestrian traffic along those streets or other institutions besides schools that might attract traffic along those streets.
Councilmember Schultz.
Would this study examine where there's missing sidewalks, gaps along state highways as part of it, to identify those gaps?
It would identify any gaps, any ADA compliance issues. And certainly there are state highways that is, I mean, where it's a plenty branch that has a sidewalk on one side of the street, but there's been a desire in certain segments of the community to have a sidewalk constructed on the other side. And certainly Councilmember Wright could speak to that.
So all I was requesting was that we get an idea of the cost of assessing sidewalks along state highway. Councilmember Clay.
If I didn't get an assessment of the cost, we're going to end up spending the money because they're going to see that we're interested in doing so. My take on it is that the state highway owns that right-of-way and they don't get to abdicate their responsibility around it because they've decided that they don't want to work on sidewalks. They are required to comply with the ADA, just like the city is. And if we have sidewalks in the city that are along state roadways where the state owns the right-of-way and therefore owns the sidewalk and there is an ADA requirement for that sidewalk, then we should tell them that they need to comply with the ADA and fix that sidewalk as a priority. Now, if they want to pay us to fix it using our contractor because we're cheaper, I think that's great. I'm happy to accommodate that part of it. But I pay state taxes, just like everybody else does. And I pay state taxes in the same amount that somebody who lives in an unincorporated area of a community lives. And there's no reason why they can't comply with the same rules and regulations that we do and fix those sidewalks.
Councilmember Robinson.
It's hard for me to answer this question about whether we want to fund a study, to put this in the same context as the Tool Study, because I think we've learned from the Tool Study and we need to do our analysis of where sidewalks go in a little different way. And so my fear is that we would try to jam this analysis into the same mold as the Tool Study, which is not necessarily where we want to go.
How about I rephrase my question?
Okay.
Would the council like a two-pronged approach on sidewalks along state highways? First, make it clear to state highway administration that we think they should address ADA issues on their sidewalks and make that clear, not only to state highway administration, but our state delegation or however that best seems to be, to have the case made. And to direct staff to consider sidewalks on state highways as part of an assessment of accessibility through neighborhoods so that as we're looking at what we might want to do as far as access to various things in a neighborhood or from a neighborhood, that there's consideration of what is on state highways so that we're not just considering our sidewalks and leaving those out of the equation.
Are you saying, are you, is what we're doing right now discussing how we want to spend additional monies to put state highways in context? Is that what we're doing?
My revised proposal was not spending money.
I think that's what we're proposing.
But having basically a lobbying effort on the question.
I got the lobbying effort part.
And making sure that we incorporate what's on state highways sidewalks so that if there's a missing piece, say, along Ethan Allen, that would make it such that the access that we feel is necessary would be accommodated along that state highway as opposed to a particular city-owned street a block over or whatever it might be, that that is part of the consideration, if it isn't now.
That was a long answer. Well, I'm fine with the lobbying part. I think I would go, I go along with that. I think we've learned a lot of things since the Tool Study. Part of it is also that we didn't consider environmental impact, which I continue to be concerned about in putting sidewalks in for the sake of them. And the way for me to get clarity and a process going, now I'm speaking in general and not necessarily to that exact request that you're putting out there, Bruce or Mayor Williams, but I think that we'll be able to get this process in place better if we have a map that we can discuss that shows people why we're proposing sidewalks on their blocks. And if part of the process to get to that point is to, here's where I'm a little confused. It sounds like you're trying to incorporate the state highway components into that larger, in my mind, a larger map showing where we think sidewalks should go as a start of a discussion. And if that's what you're proposing, then I'm for it. But unless we get to that additional scope, I don't think it's money well spent.
I would say at this point, unless in particular the Public Works Director has any thoughts on how we incorporate state highway and what we're doing, I'd be willing to kind of leave that point on the table for the moment and just go with, we've got a direction on who we think should be doing the state highway work. And then move on to the other pieces and see if we can come back to incorporate that. Yes.
Good.
It would be a little challenging to provide pressure upon state highway unless we know what it is we're asking them to do. So in some ways, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. We would have to spend the money to assess their sidewalks, to tell them what they need to do to make a correction. Otherwise, we could say, "In general, we don't think your sidewalks are compliant. Please do a study and then please fund the improvements."
I think what we should do is we should send them a letter and CC the Justice Department, explain that we think that there's a wide range of ADA improvements that they need to make on the sidewalks that exist on state highways in Tacoma Park.
Councilmember Schultz.
It seems to me that unless we identify or somehow or another able to identify the failings, the ADA shortcomings on state highways, we're going to be writing a generalized letter regardless of whether we send it to the Justice Department or not. And it would carry a little more weight if we had the ability to sort of say, "This is where you have to fix sidewalks," and be very plain about it, which might then mean that we need to do some kind of a study to actually do that assessment. Because I'm afraid if we just sort of write a letter that's not specific.
It's not our responsibility to tell the state highway how to comply with ADA.
No, I'm not saying that we should. That's not my point. I just think we need to be able to provide them with the facts of where the ADA, where they are failing their ADA responsibilities.
That's not our responsibility. They're the ones responsible for complying with ADA.
I understand it's their responsibility, but I'm trying to make it so that we have the strongest case, because we can write all the letters we want, they choose to ignore them. I mean, that's all I'm just trying to do is make our case stronger.
I just don't think we should spend money to figure that out. It's their responsibility.
I agree, we shouldn't have to.
If you write a letter and file a complaint, an investigator will come out and measure it with one of those long levels. And I used to do that when I worked at an unmentionable federal agency in another arena of ADA activities. So it's true that we do not have to, we don't have to pay for the assessment. We might get faster service if we have to pay for the assessment. And an assessment short of, it's sort of a quick and dirty assessment, short of a whole analysis of how much concrete that is, would probably not be that expensive.
If I may to, if the Justice Department comes out, they'll look at our streets as well.
Yeah. And I was going to say, we might want to consider being careful what we might ask for because it might have unintended consequences in our relationship with state highway and other questions. So I think we've talked about state highway issues. Where I thought there was going to be easy to get clarity, and it's become obvious that it is not easy to get clarity in that area.
Okay, what was the result of that decision?
My sense is no decision. But we've brought up issues that would need to be addressed, so I'm prepared to say, "Oh, never mind, I thought that was an easy one to take at the top." It appears not to be. And we'll, and for the moment, we'll move on to the higher priority items in terms of time. And we're tabling that discussion for now because it requires more discussion. And I'll just make a couple of the quick comments that I had and then move on to colleagues for other observations and clarity on other issues. The deputy city manager was talking about other activities that might require new sidewalks, new ADA sidewalks for compliance, where it's not just correcting existing ones. And it brought to my mind a discussion that the council had a few years ago about whether it was advisable to consider improving the path, the Circle Avenue path from Goody Avenue to Circle Avenue. And the eventual answer became if we were to do anything beyond just kind of maintenance And the eventual answer became if we were to do anything beyond just kind of maintenance of what was there through the path to try and make it easier for people to get through those woods, that it would trigger ADA compliance and that we would have to do like a boardwalk zigzagging through with certain slopes and inclines. And it became impossible to even consider improving the path through the woods because it would bring, cause the whole thing to come into ADA compliance. So I think that's another example of the type of thing where if you're considering a project of some kind, it may involve new sidewalks.
There's been a lot of discussion of things like that. And so I'm looking forward to see if some of the upcoming discussions may address that. There's lots of literature on it. There's a lot of concern about those, you know, what do you do in a more natural environment? So I think that that would be one of the kinds of questions that if we did have somebody come to speak with us, it would be a good question for that person.
Which reminds me, was it easy to say, yes, we do want to have somebody come give us that briefing? Is that the easy one?
Absolutely.
That we can just nod and say, yes, okay, we'll do that? Okay, good, we got one. I also just wanted to bring up two other quick things that are general comments on this whole discussion. One of them is there have been various people in the community who have talked about how Tacoma Park is a very walkable community and we don't need more sidewalks. And it brought to mind the walkability scores. And there's a walkability website that you can go to and see how walkable your streets are. And my recollection is that I went to it thinking that, oh, Tacoma Park will have a high walkability score and, and my street is part of a network where there's all sidewalks connecting to lots of things and we can walk on sidewalks everywhere. And I was shocked to find that my street and Tacoma Park in general had a lower walkability score on that website than I anticipated. It was a while ago, my recollection is, that my street had a walkability score of 60, which was not particularly high. So I think if people are bandying about the walkability of a community, it may, our walkability may not be as high as we think.
Do you remember because it was, is it was because it was hilly?
I don't remember. And the other general comment I just wanted to make was that, as I thought about some of the, some of the question that we're going to have to, I hope, answer this evening in terms of how, the process that we want and kind of what, what firm positions we want to take on saying, well, you know, whether residents can veto a sidewalk in, on their block or how we consider that. Called to mind the, part of the difficulties that we all see in the national debate about the debt and people pointing out that any number of people who have signed pledges saying, you know, no new taxes or this, that, whatever those pledges might be, and looking at the advisability of people in political office or desiring to be in political office, kind of signing absolutes without consideration of what the particular circumstances of a situation might be. And I just thought, well, I think, I see a parallel there in setting up an absolute of like, well, you know, if, if some percentage of people on a, on a block say, no, we don't want sidewalks, and therefore if we say, okay, you've got veto power and there will never be sidewalks on that street again, or never be consideration of those. Circumstances change, neighborhoods change, people move, populations age, considerations change. So I'm loathe to kind of go in, in a process to, there's a veto that essentially puts something to rest and people feel, well, now we've, you know, we've taken care of that issue and it's never going to come back. So I would just caution us to remember that taking absolute positions on that can be problematic. And I'll move to my colleagues for thoughts on these issues and move to Councilor Clay.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. So this sidewalk process has a long history dating back before I got on the council, as Mayor Kathy Porter has told me. So I'm not going to review that. I am going to thank every single staff person and particularly our frontline staff people who have to go to community meetings about sidewalks for running, managing meetings, dealing with the sometimes contentious process of collecting community input, being extraordinarily respectful and providing all kinds of information to people. And to all of the people in the community with all of the varying opinions who have participated and helped to get us to the point where we are now. So that said, I do also then want to say that we are, we are here where we're at in a difficult position in part because we didn't get ahead of this issue when we should have. And so we're in a situation now where there's a lot of, there's a lot of information out there and there's a lot of misinformation out there and there's a lot of confusion and there's a lot of apprehension. And we, as a council, and I believe as the administrator staff of the city and the community leaders of the city, need to take the time to address this issue and provide people with appropriate information and opportunity to participate and with a process because they're owed a, they're owed a process and an understandable way to engage the city and their community on the issue of sidewalks. As I said previously at the, at the War Two, last War Two night, I also think that is particularly the responsibility of the city council to articulate the case for sidewalks where appropriate around issues of connectivity, around issues of access for everybody, how we can have sidewalks and that it's, that it's not a sidewalks versus the environment issue and, and that we can integrate these into our community in a lot of different places and that it doesn't have to be this oppositional issue. The other thing that I want to say before I make some of the other comments is that I think it's important to limit what we're talking about tonight because people keep trying to bring in a lot of other issues like, what do we do about state highways? Is this the best use of speed camera funds? If we have a listing of sidewalks that are approved, how do we prioritize those listings? And I don't, I don't think that we're going to be able to take all of that on tonight, although I think one item at a time, we could take those on. And that tonight, we should focus on the concept of for those, for those sidewalks, I guess, whether, I guess it wouldn't matter that much whether we were talking about state highway or city-owned roads. But who is eligible to get into the funding stream and how do they get into the, how do they get into the funding stream? And, and limit it to that piece and I think we'll be more successful. Because then we're talking about the criteria for how communities and whether it be block by block or communities as a whole then say that they in fact want a sidewalk. So with that said, some other pieces that I want to talk about is that in terms of sort of getting on top of the issue, I think that we need to put out more information, we need to have a centralized site, and we need to have facts. And we've talked about some of the facts. The ADA piece is an important fact. I think there's misinformation being constantly repeated in the community by people who, you know, aren't experts in it. And that we need to have what the city's position on that is, whether it be, you know, through our deputy city administrators' meetings with the access board or with our attorney. But we need to have what, what our, our version of those facts are and how we're going to work forward and even acknowledge the things that are unknowns, if there are unknowns. And I think things like the walkability study and issues around what community support really is, where we've had an acceptable measure of, of community support that has been put forth. So I think that's going to be important. That comes back around to the issues of, you know, what is, what is ADA? What are the compliance gaps? What's the five feet versus three feet issue? Because some places it says five feet, some places it says three feet. Is there, is it really true that the ADA doesn't require sidewalks? Well, the courts in the state of Maryland have said, in fact, that ADA can require sidewalks to the tune of the $3 million judgment where you don't have, where you have a gap in sidewalks from one place to another and somebody gets, gets hurt. That entity is, is liable for that. And I think we need to put that information out there along with issues about what the, what the right-of-way is and how you might identify what the right-of-way is on your property and what you're actually allowed to do in your right-of-way and that sort of thing. I do want to tackle head-on a couple of issues. One is the notion that the majority of people are opposed to sidewalks. I have to tell you that that's not my experience. I would agree with the Public Works Director. I get a lot of, I got a lot of letters from people who are afraid to put things on the listserv. There are silent majorities and then we have some vocal majorities who've actually come out to, to several of the, of the meetings. I think it's really important then for us to be mindful about how we collect community input on this and how we validate that community input into that. And I want to say that I think that community engagement should come first. And I understand, you know, I'm loathe to give up a state dollar or a federal grant dollar as well around this issue of the state routes to school. But quite frankly, if it came down to it and we had to give up state routes to school funding so that some other community could work on their safe routes to school program while we got all of our ducks in a row around our community engagement, I would far rather do that than install sidewalks in a community that isn't ready for them when we could possibly go through the community engagement process. I'd like to talk a little bit about what I think some of the big issues are. Right-of-way is owned by the entire community. And I think one of the issues is, you know, what is the value of the input of the community versus the value of a length of street versus the value of a block? And I think that's one of the things that we need to decide on. What are the issues around opting in versus being able to opt out? And what are the issues around survey versus petition? And I'd like to sort of cross off the survey versus petition piece first. I have to tell you that watching my community go through the survey process or through the survey and the petition process, I would say the survey process is the better process. And I don't think that we should engage a petition process. It's very parallel to the things that Mayor Williams was saying about making declarative statements. That's part of it. But the other part of it is that when we, when we utilize the petition process for speed bumps, what's at stake is a $3,000 installation of, of a speed bump in, in a short block that has a sort of a limited effect ratio. But even when we have put in petitions for speed bumps, we have had people come back and say, well, that's not really what I meant. My wife signed it, but I didn't really want to. I've changed my mind. I signed it because I felt pressured. And I think in the last year, maybe two, we've had a couple of instances where we've had people then, one, I think in War Three, right after we installed them, they came back with another round of petitions saying, uninstall this.
It was the other way around.
Was the other way around.
Install it and then, no, I didn't really mean that. Leave it be.
Now, leave it be? All right. So in any case, so I have some concerns about the petition process. Whereas I think in the survey process, there's not pressure from a neighbor that you know that wants you to sign a piece of, of paper. And so the city could put out non-biased information that would go out to the community and folks could then participate in the survey. We could do one for household. I think that that would be reasonable and would be free of some of the, some of the, some of the pressures. I know that commentary that I got back from the petition process in War Two, people specifically reported that they felt there was high pressure to sign the petition, that there was a lot of misinformation that was associated with the petition, both in the idea of what the, what the city would do. Would we, you know, take a bulldozer and plow 10 feet of the, of the front yard? Were we going to cut down every tree? Were sidewalks going to invite people close to our houses to peer in our windows? Did signing the petition mean that you were opposed to sidewalks or did it just mean that you wanted to slow down the process? So depending on who was passing around the petition, there were a lot of different things that got put forth. Some people said that they felt that the petition gatherers completely accurately represented the petition and they were happy with it. But others, not so much. And I think that if we avoid the petition process and go with the survey process, that we will avoid that part of it. Let's talk a little bit about opt-in versus opt-out. I think there's some challenges to both of these. If we talk about the opt-in process, we have, and I think there are some cases where opt-in is appropriate. So for example, we have a street on Prince George's Avenue, I'm sorry, I don't remember the block of it. It's between Elm and Circle?
Or Circle and.
Or Circle and Conway?
Yeah. But here is a, there is a sidewalk on the side of Street from Elm to Circle.
Okay. So we've got a situation where we have, I believe the deal is that there's sidewalk on each end and then there's a piece where there's no sidewalk in between. Well, this is a place where I wouldn't have any problem with opting in with a sidewalk because people want the sidewalk. It's, it's universal. There's no reason why I think we can't install it now. And it does not trigger any ADA requirement around other areas in the community because there's one on each end. But let's say we took this same situation and we moved it to the block of Lincoln Avenue between Aspen and Jackson, which is a very small block. I don't know, are there like five people on one side? And we said, okay, let's, we got a petition from this small section of the street and they would like to opt in to having a sidewalk. Well, if we let them opt in to having a sidewalk and we go and we install it and we go down a ways and we opt in to having a sidewalk in the section of Lincoln Avenue that runs between Larch and Hayward, we have now created a gap which can trigger ADA requirements because what happens when you have two sections of sidewalk and you have an unsidewalk area in between is you have an ADA compliance problem. So if we let people opt in to sidewalks where the opting in on that street then creates an ADA compliance issue, we've essentially dictated that the rest of this, of that whole length of street then becomes a sidewalk length. It's sort of a, a back door to creating a requirement for sidewalks, which while people who are pro-sidewalk might like that, I think it's somewhat disingenuous to the, the process of actually engaging the community to get community support. So I would say that we should have a two-tiered piece so that where opting in does not trigger other ADA compliance, we should say yes to opt in. And where opting in does require, comply with, create other ADA compliance issues, we need to look at the, at the bigger picture. So now let's move to opting out. We essentially have the reverse issue with opting out. So let's say everyone along Lincoln Avenue wanted sidewalks all the way from Jackson Avenue to the Lincoln Elm Circle. But the three houses that front Lincoln Avenue between Larch and Hayward, for example, decide that as a block, they're going to opt out. The, the problem that this creates is that they essentially, they can't opt out as, as a block. Because if you opt out as, as a, as a block, we're out of ADA compliance because we have a gap. And so we have to look at that process so that when we do these surveys, we're actually taking the entire section of, of streets such that it would meet the ADA, it would not trigger ADA problems either through the opt-out process or the opt-in process. Everybody with me now? All right. So the last piece that I want to, so that's, that's the opt-in, opt-out. And I think as long as we watch out for those things, we can do a survey process to allow communities, both block by block and, and section of street by section of street within those parameters, to express their preference over sidewalks or not. So then the other, the other, so the other part of the issue is the idea of the community versus the, the block. And you could even subdivide this into the block versus, one side of the street versus the other side of the street, depending on what side it's going to be on. And, and to me, that's the most important substance of this debate is, is where right-of-way is a community resource. How do we value the interests of the, that specific homeowner, that specific block, that specific. How do we value the interests of that specific homeowner, that specific block, that specific street vis-à-vis the rest of the community? And I guess that's where I would like to focus the discussion. I personally think that there should be a balance between what the interests are of the people along a stretch of street versus the rest of the community and that there should maybe even be some criteria relative to whether or not that street is a connector to a community resource, how much you value the neighborhood input versus the input of a particular block. And I'll let other people talk.
Thank you. Those were helpful concepts.
I've been thinking about this.
I can tell. Councilmember Snipper, followed by Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Robinson.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. And I thank you for your very thoughtful summary of the issues as well as expressing what I thought were good solutions to the dilemmas in most of the cases, although you punted on one or two of them.
I don't want to answer all the problems, solve all the problems. I gotta leave something for Josh.
Oh, boy. That's really good. I think that, what would I add? I thought those were the right issues and the right way to think about the issues. I would add a couple of things. One is that there is a inherent priority, excuse me, priority going on which has to do with, we have a limited amount of money and a lot of sidewalks that could be put in place. And there are parts of the city that would like the sidewalks. And while folks are arguing about whether they should or shouldn't have a sidewalk and the clock is ticking, other parts of the city are, you know, complaining, "Where's my sidewalk?" Which I had one. So, I do think we need to give some recognition in the process so that the sidewalks go within some, yes, we should put a, let's say we had 10 places we could put sidewalks. If there is a lot of community desire for a sidewalk in a particular place, it should be done first as a way of prioritizing within these groups. I realize that that runs up against some of the geographic stuff, but, you know, we're going to take many years before we do these and I would like to not have to wait, not have to wait 10 years or more to get sidewalks in places where it's not controversial. Second thing is, I believe it was GeoEdgel, I tried to give some credit, who suggested that in some cases, it may be possible to put the sidewalks in the roadway where the roadway is wide as a way of reducing some of the objections to sidewalks. And I think that has a couple of advantages. One, particularly on our quieter residential streets, narrower streets will slow the traffic. And the other obvious advantage is you're not taking people's yards or anything, you're not damaging trees and so on, you're not adding impermeable surface if you use part of the roadway. With regard to the impermeable surface, I wonder if the city could consider alternative designs in solid concrete. That's a fairly obvious one. I've seen it done in some areas around DC where they use impermeable surfaces instead of hard surfaces. I'm not super fond of those because when they get snowy, man, they are really hard to clean the snow off when it's slightly irregular because the ice tends to get in between the little joints and then it's really hard to, you know, smooth sidewalks, easy to clean. But with, you know, with global warming, maybe we'll have fewer snowstorms.
More ice storms.
More ice storms, right. And I agree thoroughly with the perspective that the mayor outlined in that we need to be mindful that this process will take many years and that we should recognize that things will change and that an area might be opposed to a sidewalk now, but in five or 10 years, they may have changed their minds or other people may have moved in or whatever. And I'll stop there.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. I think the issues are complex and I think Councilmember Clay kind of hit it on the head when she cited the examples of basically those situations where the benefit to sidewalks accrue to a much larger population than the person that it's directly in front of the house of who perceives themselves as being damaged. And that if we go, in some cases, block by block and we have these sidewalks where it would make sense to connect some significant roads and we allow people to opt out, that kind of reduces the value of the money we've spent in other places. I agree that the kind of petition setup versus survey creates problems. This might be an area where I would suggest technology could actually be very useful in allowing households to vote for what they want privately and get a lot of input from people. And then do some follow-up survey if you haven't gotten responses. I agree with Ruben's point that there's, I would guess I would summarize it up as, are there low-hanging fruit? So, are there places where we know we need sidewalks that would derive benefit and people want sidewalks and we should spend the money there first rather than argue with other people, given that some of that stuff has to be contiguous? Related to, there's a specific question about Phase 1 and a bunch of that Phase 1 work on the ADA portion is suggested to be in my ward. And some of the actual new sidewalk installations are in my ward, but not very many because there's not really new sidewalks. There's a few key places on Chicago Avenue and I can't remember, I can't quite tell if that's on the side where we met with the people and they said they didn't want the sidewalk. Yeah, yeah. Or if it's the park to continue the park. Okay, so that's the park part.
Yes, that is, we added a new sidewalk off of Lost Avenue through a process.
Done or decided that we weren't going to do it? Because there's a marking here for Old Philadelphia where I know we didn't replace anything and we opted, there was an idea we were going to put sidewalks on the other side of Old Philadelphia. And that was pretty early on and I was concerned, I didn't think that was the best use of resources because there's a perfectly good sidewalk on the other side, it's not a heavy traffic area.
Yeah, it's probably an error in our chart.
Okay.
It was intended to be the sidewalk we put behind the library and Community Center and connected onto the Grant Avenue side.
Okay.
So, it should be along Philadelphia and not on.
Okay.
Yeah, we made improvements on the existing Philadelphia Avenue.
And that little sliver of Chicago that's marked as blue, was that? Do we finish all that side of the park, is that correct? Or do we?
There's still some sections of the rubber sidewalk that hasn't been installed.
Okay. As it relates to the portions that are within my ward of the ADA work, you know, I know this is very controversial and it was done in North Tacoma. I had concerns about whether this is the best place to spend money in general related to public safety. I lost that battle, so the money's going to be spent. And so, I'm open to looking at those. I think we should be, have a process that engages people maybe a little bit more than we did in North Tacoma just a little bit earlier so that people really understand what's going on. And I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about replacement of sidewalks, which we replaced not that very, not very long ago. So, for example, on Hodges, we built a new sidewalk not that long ago as part of Safe Routes to School. I assume it's ADA compliant. Sorry, not Hodges, it's on Grant. I assume it's ADA compliant, but if it's not, I think it would be, that's the kind of thing, I think that as much as you explain it to people, it drives them insane when they see a brand-new sidewalk that then gets torn up.
And if I can just, we may get slight modifications to even what we have done with the information that comes out tomorrow, so we'll see.
Okay. In terms of the other red lines, basically, I think I would defer quite a bit to the council members whose wards it's in. I don't know how much of this is driven by the tool design, but the more I looked at the tool design, the more I realized the grading that we used was a little bit problematic because it put a very high weighting on how easy it was or how inexpensive it was to install something versus how critical it was to connectivity. And not that I want to go back and reweight that whole thing, and I think Councilmember Siemens very appropriately pointed out that it all depends on the weighting and that would shift everything around. But I think we did say at the time that the council member should have some say in where particular the priority is within the ward. So, I think we should reprioritize based on connectivity rather than ease of installation because that's where you're going to get also, I think, more community support. It might be really easy to put a sidewalk in front of, I don't know, any of the number of peoples we've heard speak, but it's not really going to drive connectivity, so it's a harder case to make with people. And then I think we just kind of need to choose some number around which we're, is the threshold by which we allow people to, you know, what the threshold is of a particular block, is there some way or is it, do we look at, okay, we're installing along three blocks and we have to let everyone have input on those three blocks? And if the number is, I don't know what the number is, you know, 70% against, is that, you know, is that the threshold where it's okay? If 70% vote against in that contiguous area that we want to install, then maybe we shouldn't do it.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Yeah, I still think that as continued the discussion that Councilmember Wright was talking about, that's the survey. I think the survey was fantastic. It took us from being nowhere and knowing nothing about or very little about our sidewalks and what's available in the city and the conditions. And so, I think it was a very valuable survey. But again, I think it was limited in scope. It was limited to the criteria that was provided for in the grant for the Safe Routes to School program. And I really think, I thought at the time that this was before us when the tool was first brought to us, and I still feel the same way, that it was incomplete for the needs of the city and for the city council. I think the next step should be to take that survey and complete it for proper use by the government in identifying what, where we need sidewalks and where we should prioritize sidewalks. So, there are such things as connectivity, other institutions besides schools that are important to include in that connectivity, and as Councilmember Robinson said, the environmental impact. I don't think it's sufficient to just say, "Well, we, you know, we'll be under the tree protection plan and, you know, the city government has to be as rigorous as the private citizen has to be." Because I think when we're looking at where to put sidewalks, we need to consider the environmental impact. And I also see where, in my neighborhood, where roads and curves were put in and special precautions were taken around large trees, that within a couple of years, several of those trees died because the curves were put in so close to the trees. Anyways, so I think the next step really should be to finish that survey to make it more usable by us in making these decisions. And then I would say that the idea that, you know, what should the public input be, especially along the streets where we're talking about? I think that's a difficult question, but I think there should be allowance for voice of those residents who live in the neighborhoods where the sidewalks are going in. And I would point out that when we talk about the difference between the petition process and the survey process, we do use the petition process for speed bumps. And those speed bumps affect much more, many more residents than just those that live along the road and in front of whose homes those speed bumps are put in. And yet, we give those homeowners the power to decide what's going to happen there on their street. I'm not saying necessarily the petition process would be what we should use, but I think it does indicate that we should be giving strong input for those residents in the neighborhoods that we're talking about.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm glad you put this map in here and I liked the discussion that we're having. It seems like we're lurching some sort of a process. I hope that's helpful for you. It's, the ADA requirement of connection to public buildings and spaces seems like a really important requirement. And environmental impact, as I mentioned before, I think is really important because, I'm not sure if this is true, but I believe that concrete is a very high producer of greenhouse gases. I also think that people don't have a right to sidewalks. They, a lot of people would like sidewalks. And I know that in Pinecrest, for example, there are a lot of people who want access to Old Town. And they're wondering about the process, as are many others. So, Old Town is a destination and New Hampshire Avenue is a destination. That's where the people in Pinecrest typically want to go. So, the question for me is what helps our citizens and what's our planning process? And in this regard, we have some tools at hand, we have the tool study. But what we don't have is a map, a kind of an extension of this map, which shows the destinations and the sidewalks we have and the gaps to get to the, get people from neighborhoods to destinations. And I think that that's important because I think that people would be able to relate to that. And they would be able to put aside their own misgivings about perhaps about sidewalk on their own block if they see, "Oh, well, it is for the public good." And that is what we're talking about. But, and what people get upset about is when they think that something's being done without regard to their needs and that is not for the public good or that it's skewed in some way, it's inefficient or, and, you know, the, "Don't do it twice" is partly as, you know, relates to tree, health of trees, but it's also an efficiency and an equitable, I mean, a good use of our scarce resources. So, I'm all for the process and I think it ought to be a planning process, however we work that out. And I think that it needs to include a map that shows people why there are going to be sidewalks proposed in front of their house or not. And that that planning process, I suspect, will take a long time. And as Mayor Williams alludes, you know, it might go on for years.
One of the things, I think I'd like to address a couple of things about the tool design group's study. They do have numerous maps and some of them were shown to the council as part of that presentation.
That's right.
It shows the whole city and shows all of the missing sidewalks or whatever, so that you get a sense of that. You know, there is an interesting balance between the low-hanging fruit and the critical paths. And in one sense, the ranking system went for some of the low-hanging fruit, what was something that wasn't as obstruct, that didn't have as many obstructions yet had, that was on some paths that seemed to be important. That was on some paths that seemed to be important. But I think that one of the things that we... I don't feel that there is consensus on is just kind of the identification of those connecting routes. And I think that that is a very helpful... That would be a very helpful piece of information. I think as staff, we've done our best at kind of putting these things together, but there's some... But there's a lot of subjectivity in that. And so I think that some assistance with that could be very useful.
Well, in this...
Just one more thing. One of the things that's really tough on destinations is that unfortunately or fortunately, we're really well-served by public transit. And if we have connections to every bus stop, we would have sidewalks in every location.
I'm not talking about bus stops. I'm talking about walking to...
Right, but that is a common... That is a common destination in these kinds of studies. And so part of it is kind of ranking what destinations are important. And for example, we did look at the importance of the folks in Pinecrest to get to New Hampshire Avenue or to the Old Town area because they are places that they have indicated. Nevertheless, you know, how we rank those is, I think, more up to you.
Councilmember Schultz.
After what everybody else has said, I've been sort of rethinking about how I can address my remarks that would be the most and the most helpful way to... For everyone. And I think the way I want to do that is to talk in terms of the process in Ward Six and the outcomes of that process and use that to illustrate some of the things that we learned there. First of all, and it also addresses, well, what is the best approach? Is it to come up with a design first or a draft design and then introduce it? Or is it to start the conversation and then have the design later? In Ward Six, as has been mentioned, it was the first approach. It was the... Where the engineers were... Came up with some preliminary engineering plans, very preliminary, and then those were exposed to the public. I think that that helped because it gave something real to people to sink their teeth into and to challenge. So rather than a challenge in the abstract, such as environmental damage or stuff like that, it was something there that you could sort of say, well, why is the sidewalk on this side of the street as opposed to the other? Or why can't we bend the sidewalk or go out into the street so we can save a tree or something like that? In any case, that seemed to work. And I'm not saying that's the way it should always be done in every ward, but that's... It lent some reality to the process, but then understand that most people in Ward Six were wanting to have sidewalks. And so the mere... The fact of that the engineers produced something was encouraging, that indicated that the city was actually serious about, you know, responding to the community's interest. I want to point out that a misconception that I see in a lot of these emails, copies of which we have here, is that people seem to be drawing distinctions that if we have sidewalks, we can't have traffic calming. And I want to point out is that we can do both. We're doing both in Ward Six. We started with the traffic calming first and made... Came up with a bunch of solutions that seemed to be helping, and then the sidewalks became... Rose as a second thing, as a second thought. On Erskine Street, which is in my ward and is a major cut-through street, the sidewalk issue there was raised first. And because of concerns and some opposition to the sidewalk along Erskine, the community is requesting that we slow down the sidewalk process until the traffic calming can be looked at. And I've agreed with that, and I think that's the way we need to go, so that we can look at traffic calming and sidewalks together. And I think that will relieve a lot of fears and anxieties that one... Only one part of the equation will be dealt with and the other might be ignored. Drainage issues can be resolved because I see that that's an oft-raised opposition. And on Wildwood Drive, the engineers have proposed rain gardens to catch some of the water runoff. And other places, the right-of-way is so wide that there can be a grass space between the curb and the sidewalk, which can catch a lot of the runoff before it could ever get into the streets. Trees and veg... Opposites... Sometimes opponents worry about trees and vegetation being destroyed. The surveyors went and marked every tree of any substantial size whatsoever in terms of its nature and its quality, its condition. And it turned out that a lot of the stuff that's in the way is old or it's just... It's not worth saving, and it can be easily replaced with young trees and... Or shrubbery can be replaced at the city's expense. And my feeling is, is that, you know, that vegetation and trees, while it seems to some of us that it takes forever for trees to grow big and tall, I guess I've been around long enough to realize that I've seen trees come and go. And, you know, it doesn't take long for the vegetation to come back. In a couple instances on Wildwood Drive, the engineers have literally proposed, in orders to save some trees, moving the sidewalk, narrowing the street and moving the sidewalk into the street, which does two things. It saves a tree, but it also serves as traffic calming. And I mention that because it illustrates the flexibility, some of the things that can be done. The question comes up again as to who gets to vote. Ms. Braithwaite raised that issue, and I think it's a real conundrum. Surely the people whose sidewalks or properties are going to be built, who have properties that sidewalks are going to be built on ought to have veto power, that some would say. But yet these sidewalks serve people from all the side streets as well, and maybe the streets that parallel that don't have any sidewalks at all. And so I think while, you know, it may be valuable to have the input of those, obviously, who are right on that street or on that... Whose houses' property is going to have a sidewalk built on it, it's... Sidewalks serve the larger community. In the case of Erskine Street, that seems to be generally recognized by the city. Department of Public Works is the street that has the most cut-through traffic. It's a very narrow street, but it connects New Hampshire Avenue with Riggs Road, and it's the only through street between East West Highway and New Hampshire. And so it gets an enormous amount of cut-through traffic. And there's a very steep incline as it enters into New Hampshire, which can be kind of dangerous in ice storms and snow. There's a bus stop there. There's a lot of people that walk that sidewalk, that street in the evening after dark, particularly in the wintertime. And I think we need to think of a classification of a certain situations where, in the council's opinion, safety overrides all other criteria. May not be many situations that fall into that category, but I think that in some... That these do arise, in which case we just build the sidewalk because it's the responsible thing to do to protect people. And Erskine Street is one of those. And I think we can do it as sensitively as possible, protecting people's, you know, the aesthetics and all of that. But I just think those are situations that we need to be able to take into account. I do relate to the... To those who oppose are worried about sidewalks because they shorten very narrow front... Small front yards, or they bring strangers walking closer to your front doors when your front door is already kind of closed to the street. And I don't disparage those feelings at all. I understand them. That's the situation with my particular property. I have a very short front yard, which I spent years landscaping, and the last thing I want to see is see a sidewalk built there. So I'm nobody's... I'm no more noble about this than anybody else. I understand what it can mean, but let's just... If that's the case, let's just... I just ask citizens, let's be honest about it and just say it. Not come up with a lot of circuitous kind of things that, you know, it's, I don't want to have to shovel snow. As I told one of my constituents, I don't think the burden of shoveling snow once every few years is enough to outweigh the value of installing sidewalks. And if you have elderly people who literally can't shovel the snow, that they're responsible, then that's another problem. But we don't solve it by not building sidewalks. We solve it by being neighborly and helping out. I think some of the solutions, we can delay sidewalks where they are not as particularly sorely needed, like I was talking about, and where there's strong opposition. And, you know, I think we should just go with the flow in those cases. Like Councilmember Snipper was saying, there may be situations where, you know, let's go build these sidewalks where they're needed and also wanted. There's plenty to do in the city. And in two or three, four, five years, as Mayor Williams pointed out, neighborhoods change. I know in my neighborhood, where I live on Wildwood, when I moved there 26 years ago, there were absolutely no children in the neighborhood at all. The closest thing to children was my wife and I. We were the young guns that moved into the neighborhood. And now the community is overrun with kids. It's just an amazing transformation that has taken place, mostly over the last 10 I do not like... I agree that I don't like the idea of petitions. I think they can be conjured up and written in such a way as to encourage people to say... To vote for something when they don't have all the facts. I think sending out surveys to households in an area, I agree with that approach, but I don't think it's always necessary to do a survey. In the case of Wildwood Drive and the streets in the northern part of Ward Six, there's a very strong overwhelming sentiment that the sidewalks should be built, and the sooner they get built, the better. That isn't to say there aren't some very articulate people in the neighborhood who are absolutely and adamantly opposed, but the overwhelming sentiment seems to have been through a number of meetings over, I don't know how long it's been, I hate to think, in Ward Six, that they just want the sidewalks. They're basically really happy with the designs. I know that Ms. Braithwaite has to do one more meeting to make some final adjustments based on citizen recommendations. And so I think in that case, a survey would be superfluous. And in other cases where I think we can slow down the process to make sure that residents have the chance and not feel rushed or pressured, I think we can afford to do that. There's no necess... There's an urgency in most cases to build these sidewalks, but... So, you know, take... Let's take our time. Make sure that people have a chance to digest it all, that they can understand, really understand what it means and what... How the designs can vary from block to block. Sidewalk widths can be varied, and the positioning can be varied, and a lot of creativity can be done. I would support an idea where if sidewalks are certainly... There's not a lot of street traffic, and there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic, and the community basically does not want sidewalks, I'd be inclined to support community votes in that direction and just say, for now, we're not going to build a sidewalk, and maybe we'll revisit it five, 10, 15 years from now if the community changes. So that pretty much summarizes. I guess the last thing I want to say, I think Councilmember Clay's proposals make an awful lot of sense to me, and I basically support a lot of the things that she said.
Okay. I've got one observation and one question, and then I know Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Wright have additional comments. The observation is, Councilmember Schultz brought up about some people's objections to if there are sidewalks built, basically that it's going to move people closer to their houses and look in the windows or vegetation that's in the yard that is in the public right-of-way, in a small... Short distance from the right-of-way to the house. And I'll just observe that we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, on my block of Lincoln. We have short distances from the sidewalk to the house. And my sense of our relationship to the people on the sidewalks is that the people who are walking on the sidewalks are neighbors. They may not live in our block. We may not know who they are, but we recognize them because they're accessing, in our case, Carol Avenue for the bus stop or to go on up to Old Town or to the hospital or shopping or whatever it might be. And I look on it as the welcome opportunity to see my neighbors and to have them close enough that we can talk. I can hail them. I can recognize them, even if it's just, you know, a quick little pleasantry. It's engagement with neighbors and it's building community in that way. I don't see it as they're too close to the house. They're looking in. It's more like we're looking out and seeing who's on the sidewalk and what's happening on the street and knowing more of our neighbors. So I see it as a positive, not a negative, in looking at that question. And then just one question I have for the Public Works Director. I was wondering if you have a sense of any of the process that's been used so far? I'm trying to think about the question of design first or community discussions first. And wondering, I approach it as it's always an issue about whether, you know, how much information you have when you go to the community and how helpful it is to have more information or less. And there's always pluses and minuses from doing it both ways. And I tend to feel like you get better results if you can present some information upfront. And I'm wondering if you have a sense that we have any kind of completed streets, completed designs at this point, or we will in the near future, where there have been successful outcomes that show, well, here's the types of issues that get addressed. Here's how we address them in this case. Rather than spending, saying, well, gee, go to the 30% design phase or something like that for a particular street, to be able to say, here are examples of what we've done on other streets. Here's the type of issues that we've dealt with. You will have similar issues to these. Yours will be dealt with in a similar way. How that template might be helpful.
We certainly have that in Ward Six. And in fact, when we had the Ward Two discussions, I brought the drawings from Ward Six in an attempt to say, if you want to look at the specifics, I could show you what we do about trees and drainage and slopes. And they were largely not interested in looking at the design for another street, though I think had the process been more informative instead of combative, perhaps we could have had discussions that said, gee, what do you do when there's tree issues? How do you look at utility poles? What do you do on a slope? And, you know, we could have pointed to very specific ways that we approached that in the design process for Ward Six. So we do have that kind of documentation available. It just really comes down to sort of what the intentions are, the folks that are in the room.
Yeah, because I would think that it would be very helpful to have that kind of information and have it as a template and not have to go to, say, 30% design for each one and then end up going down that road and having to back up and say, oops, never mind, and we've spent that money. And it would not be an efficient use of the money, but it would gain the perspective about how the process works and how the particulars of a situation might be dealt with. So I think that would be helpful. Councilmember Clay.
I was going to put forth a proposal. I know it's bold. So listening to everything, I think that we should have at least a two-phase proposal and... And the first part should be to initiate the planning process, and the second part should be to actually implement a sidewalk. Because people actually need to, I think, have the designs and be able to talk about things before we can actually do the implementation of the process. So, I think in order to initiate the planning process, we should, the city should probably identify planning areas, which I think you've already done, Darrell. And then also, we should probably, I don't know if we want to do this as needed, but identify the, essentially, the run of the street that would be required to have a whole sidewalk. What we would be required to do before we had the sort of opt-in, opt-out problems with creating gaps in the sidewalks. And so I think that, you know, the best way to initiate the plan would be if a majority of residents on either side of the street in the identified run, positively identified that they would like to start a planning process, that we would then go to a 30% design.
You said a majority?
Well, yeah. I think that's probably something that we could talk about, and we don't have to talk about it tonight. But, so we would need some portion of the residents in this, in the identified run. Maybe not a majority, but I don't think it should be like 10%. It should be a health, a good healthy number.
And this is to start the planning?
This is just to start, yeah, to get the 30% design done, so that you can have the conversation. The other way, I think, you should be able to start the neighborhood, the plan process, and this brings us back to the issue of the engagement of the entire community versus just a block by block, is that the neighborhood association should be able to make a request to start a planning process. And this would allow folks from the broader community to say, hey, this route is really important to us, and we think it's worthwhile spending the money for the 30% design on this particular street. We'd have to deal with the issue where there aren't active neighborhood associations, and so then maybe we would have a much smaller percentage of the identified planning area, like in the 10 to 20% range. You know, again, everything being positive signature, not an opt-out, but, you know, an opt-in. So if we had a whole planning area, and you got 10% of the signatures of the people there, where you didn't, not to overrun your neighborhood association, but where you didn't have an active, a neighborhood association that was meeting regularly, that you could do it there. And then the last one would come back to the city initiative. So if the city has identified an area that they believe is in need of sidewalks for safety reasons, then the city should be able to initiate a planning process for that street and then engage the community. And that would entail meetings and discussion. And through that process, what you would want to identify is a route that meets the compliance requirements and that people have buy-in to. And so I don't have to get into the process, you know, dealing with the trees and what side of the street, because you would go through, after you did the design process, just like they have very actively done in Ward 6, you would go through the process then of redesigning and trying to come up with what it takes to get people to sign on. I also believe that the sign-on should be positive and not an opt-out, but an opt-in. Because if we do opt-ins and positive surveys, instead of people signing petitions against things, sort of eliminate that issue of people feeling arm-twisted about something. So we would ask for, the number that I've heard from several residents is 50%. So if, to do implementation, you'd have to have the majority of the run, and you would have to hit 50%, 50% of the households would have to say, yes, we want to install the sidewalk. And I think it should actually be 50% of the people on the side of the block that is defined on the plan, to have the buy-in.
People or households?
I'm sorry, households. I always mean households.
Good question.
I know, I have loose language.
And so you're talking about the same processes as used for speed humps, whereas a household is, someone in the household says yes?
That's right. Someone in the household says yes. It's 50%. I think that, you know, you could talk about the things on each side, but this requires the people who are proactively seeking the sidewalk. It puts the onus there to get the yes signatures. But it also says that it has to be the yeses of the people who live, who, on the side of the street, where the sidewalk is going to be. And I think what that will, what that will do, if you know that that's what you're driving to, then when you're going through the planning process, you will, you don't want to have a situation where 50% of the block says yes, but it's the 50% of the people who don't have the sidewalk in front of their house, because then I don't think you hit the spirit of the community supporting the sidewalk. And so I guess I would throw that out as a starting position for a plan.
And am I right in understanding that you've combined both the petition process and the survey process? Sounds like the survey would...
I'm sorry, I just do surveys.
Okay.
No petitions. You would not do surveys?
I would just do surveys.
Would just do surveys.
I think that the, I think that, we're talking about a lot of money and, you know, planning, it's not an $1,800 speed hump that you can take in or take out. And I think that this, I think that the city should certify the signatures. It'll be just that much more legitimate. And just because, Councilmember Snipper accused me of passing the buck on the ranking. I do have ranking ideas. I will throw them out quickly. I think that anywhere where there's an existing disabled resident or a person in need of access should be the top priority. Next, I think I would go with routes with identified safety issues, and then gaps in the sidewalk where it's creating liability, and then routes that connect, routes that, where there's gaps in the sidewalk such that there's a liability issue, then routes that connect to the parks or bus stops or other public amenities, and then routes where there's the smallest percentage of sidewalks in the community, so that there's at least some place where there's sidewalk for people who like to walk on sidewalk. So that's just sort of a starting point to throw out there for framework.
Councilmember Wright?
I just want to say, as I look at this map, I think it'd be really interesting if we were trying to take sidewalks out in Dan and I's Ward. People would be going nuts. And we're trying to put sidewalks in where people don't have them. In some cases, those people are going nuts. And a lot of it just has to do with people are not comfortable with change.
I'll assume all these lights are new, and I'll go in reverse order to the way we went last time. And so it'll be Councilmember Schultz, Robinson, and Siemens.
One of the things that I've had, don't understand is that there seems to be a lot of concern about saving the environment, and a lot less concern about saving and protecting people's lives. To me, sidewalks have less to do with the risks, creating risks to the environment, and a lot more to do with just plain old public safety. And I think we rarely hear about, you know, the issues such as, you know, one of the emails said here that on Central Avenue, we only get, what was it, 25 automobiles an hour coming down this, as though that's not worth worrying about. But that's one car every two minutes, and most of those cars come during rush hours, which is the exact same time when children are on the streets playing after school, or, you know, going to school buses in the morning. Without any, there's never any regard, thought, talking about the safety of pedestrians after dark, the safety of pedestrians when it's snowing, and you have no place to walk other than in the middle of the street, because there is no sidewalk. I don't see much regard for the elderly, the physically disabled who are in wheelchairs, or walkers, or crutches, or the deaf. We have a couple, several children in my block who are deaf, who really ought to be playing on sidewalks, not in the street. Moms in strollers, I don't picture moms looking forward to being able to, having to, you know...
Are you making priorities right now, Fred?
No, I'm not making priorities. I'm just bringing up some additional points that I've overlooked in my original statement, is that I understand the environmental concerns that people raise about sidewalks, but I don't understand the lack of compassion for people...
So it sounds like you are putting environmental concerns below the...
Yeah.
Okay.
So you are prioritizing? Yes.
Okay.
It just seems an absence of compassion for the elderly, the disabled, and people that are, you know, taking around toddlers and strollers, and kids wanting to ride their skateboards and bikes without having to worry about vehicles. I don't hear much comment about that, and it has struck me as odd. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens. I don't know if I got that. Did I shift that order? Okay, sorry. I inverted them on the list of papers. Okay. Councilmember Robinson.
Well, I'm not sure if it's the name of the game here is to create priorities for this map that we're going to produce, if that's what we're trying to do. I think that the ADA requirement of connections to public spaces should be the top priority, to me. I think global warming is something that we can't get around, and regardless of how many strollers you got, if the plant is too hot to stroll, then you're in terrible shape. So we have to always consider that. And I think that it's misguided to say, if a street has a one person who is disabled, then we need to fix the entire street, top to bottom. I think that's, that doesn't work. So that, I don't see that, although I have high regard for moms and strollers and people in wheelchairs, I can't see that that drives creating sidewalks along an entire street. Liability's certainly important, and a few sidewalks is important only if, so to me, the roots, the roots and the destinations is the most important. And the global warming and those effects are right behind.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the thought that Councilmember Clay put into her proposal. And I was a little unclear on some of it, though, and simply started with the design. But I think there were some elements that at least I had talked about, and some others had talked about, that were maybe missing from the survey that would lead into the design. And so I was just curious whether Councilmember Clay had any thoughts about that, such as environmental impact, which was the most recent discussion.
Well, I think that environmental impacts are discussed in the planning phase. Have you spent a lot of time looking at the Ward 6 designs and the way that process moved?
No, I haven't.
Because Councilmember Schultz actually might be, or maybe Darrell should speak to this, but...
But I use that only as an example of the environmental impacts. There are some other things that I have mentioned, at least, about, you know, pedestrian flow, traffic volumes, and other institutions besides schools that should be considered in making our decision. And I just wondered if that was, in other words, how do we add that in? I think it's valuable information that needs to be part of the process.
I don't disagree with that. I think I'm just trying, I'm trying to lay out, Frank, we're not going to vote on this tonight, are we?
No, no, but that's what I'm asking is, what does that fit in your framework?
Well, I think that, as I said, I think that the priority ranking of what we do first, we should probably tackle separately, although I laid some thoughts out. I think it's just that it's a straw man to work with that fits in a framework. The thing about the environmental...
I was trying to add another straw.
I think the thing about the environmental issues was very interesting to watch in Ward 6, because if you watch the designs evolve, the designs evolved in response to the issues of the concerns over particular trees, or other kinds of environmental issues. And in fact, the, remember on one part, the sidewalk moved from one side of the street to the other in the design process. And I know, Darrell, you haven't been working on the Central Avenue piece, but I know that the HCD, or maybe you have been working on this part of it. There's been some concern with the folks on Central Avenue about drainage, and the city staff that have been working on the sidewalk have been talking to them about that issue and how, because it's a significant issue for them. And could the city mitigate the drainage issues in the process of installing the sidewalk and actually make it better in the process? And so I think a lot of that happens after you get sort of the basic part of the layout, and that's when you really engage the conversation. One of my constituents, who you probably know, Joe Edgell, has been looking at how to do a sidewalk on Elm Avenue that's entirely in the streetbed, and has been out talking to the community. And I think he's talked to our city staff. And for something like that, we might actually start with a design that looks at that, that plan, I don't know, but it might vary a little bit.
It sounds like your thoughts on at least the environmental part is that it kind of goes in flow, as Councilmember Schultz said. It's not really part of the prioritization. It's more of an implementation.
It's an iterative process with the community during the design phase, based on the city's regulations and the things that are identified during the survey process. And then the values of that localized community come out through the design process. That's my thought about the environmental part.
Okay. But on the other, the other things that I had mentioned, I just think we need to keep those straws in the mix, because I think they come before the design process. I think they're part of the prioritization and part of what we really need in the survey. And I don't need an answer, because you don't, because you don't look like you're going to agree with this.
Yeah, well, it's, so it's the chicken and the egg process. I don't think we're going to have such a rush of neighborhoods that hit the planning part of the process in the next couple of years, that there's going to be a significant need to prioritize around the traffic issues. Now, if you want to have a discussion about how we spend Speed Camera money, for example, which is where a lot of this is funding from, vis a vis whether or not we want to put in sidewalks in a community where there is or isn't a significantly identified traffic issue, versus whether or not you want to spend it on national line. To me, that's a different conversation than the conversation about how residents who are interested in sidewalks get into the pipeline.
I understand what you're saying. We can go on and bait this on into tomorrow, but we don't have to.
And I just... Councilmember Schultz, did you have something, I was going to clarify this, and then Councilmember Wright?
You raised my name. I just want to be sure that you understood that. I'm not saying environmental issues are not important. What I'm saying is, is that I think that a lot of those environmental concerns can be satisfied and resolved in the planning process that Councilmember Clay's talking about, that it isn't as black and white as some would want us to think, that if we have a sidewalk, we're going to create an environmental problem. I think it's a question that we can figure out ways to have sidewalks that will accommodate environmental concerns. And that'll be the beauty of having this planning process, because we've been doing it on Long Wildwood Drive and some other streets.
Councilmember Snipper.
I don't think that it's...
Yeah, it is. You put it on. That's all right. You don't have to talk.
Just say something.
That's all right. Not Councilmember Snipper.
No, to turn it on.
Okay. Let me ask at this point, since we're almost two hours into this, and it's 20 of 12. Yeah, we barely got going in the first hour. We need to provide... 20 of 12. Yeah, we barely got going in the first hour. We need to provide staff with some direction. There are some particular questions that need to be answered, and Councilmember Clay has put forth a process that my sense is that it's a good basis on which staff can come back with some...
Well, in a bit of a quandary myself, I think that I can really bite into a lot of what Colleen laid out, and I think it starts down a track of something that feels very stable, sturdy, encompassing, clear. I'm left with a little bit of kind of bottom line. So for Ward Six, if we were to use your process, where would we be on that? Would we be on the place where...
You'd be in implementation, because you've already done it.
We'd need to survey and see if we have 50 percent, after our final meeting, which we have one more to go, we survey the people on the side of the block where it's designed and see if we have 50 percent support. And if we do, we proceed to construction.
Right.
And for Ward Two, where we are is, I'm not sure, where we are is, we would, we have, we had from the tool design, a planning area and a network, but it may be a little too big for your, because it was Larch, Lincoln, Boyd, you know. Should we take another stab at identifying a planning area or a run of the street, as you called it?
I'd run, I'd do the run of the street of Lincoln or Boyd, is what I would do.
Okay, so we would, where we are with Ward Two is we should identify a run of the street, and then have another meeting, and then after that, poll the residents to see if we have a 30 percent support, you know, see if we have a majority of the residents on either side of the street in the run, in that area that are positive.
Or the Neighborhood Association could say, "We'd like to proceed with..."
Or the Neighborhood Association could ask, or the city could say, "We want to put this in, in X, Y, Z place."
Well, to do the 30 percent design.
To do the 30 percent design.
Right, to do the 30 percent design.
Do we, I mean, I think that one of the things that, you know, we put forth as a possibility in this list of things is that staff can come back with the process.
Right.
And, you know, there's a couple things, frankly...
Because we're not, we're not saying, you know, A, B, C, D, E, that's it, tonight, we're done.
But for, do we want to go forward with what Darrell just outlined for Ward Six and Ward Two as a summer experiment, and we come back? And if we go forward with Ward Six...
It would be a fall experiment.
Right, but I think, you know, if, if, for example, in this trial, Ward Six goes for going forward with the sidewalks, then I don't know, we would need to bring that back. I don't know how, it would be, I guess, what your direction would be this evening, if that's how you wanted us to move.
Well, to be specific, with Ward Six, I think that you're probably going to get more than 50 percent support for the New Hampshire Gardens area sidewalk. On the Erskine thing, I think that, I would not recommend you do a survey just yet. I think what you need to do is to follow the direction that the community is asking, which is to sort of pause the sidewalk process there...
And look at traffic calming.
And look at traffic calming and get into that, so that they can be looked, be sort of implemented together. And I think that way you'll garner the most support that you'll be able to get.
Is the council happy with the process as put forth by Councilmember Clay for the, for the trial?
As a straw man, which we can build.
Yes.
Right.
Or pull out the straws over time.
It's a good way to go forward at this point, so that staff has direction, that they can stick clearly to the residents about how we're going to go forward, that it's not a final process, but that it's, we think this is a potential good way to go, and we're going to use it, see how it works.
I'm fine with it, as long as the priorities aren't set in stone.
No, they're not. Nothing is set in stone yet.
Well, as long as the priorities are presented in a certain manner.
I don't think we need to go there at this point.
Yeah, the only thing we've laid out to that, kind of like a picture to the future is, and we can re, you know, reissue it again, early on in the ADA and sidewalk discussion staff put together a list of, here's the order of things we're going to do. And it started at Ward Six, and started for the certain planning area working on, on Ward Two, and then we went to another planning area in Ward Two, and then I think we went to Ward Five. So we had a, and we were using the Tier One Priority Streets and the Safe Routes to School Streets as the identified run of streets.
I'm not, I'm not talking about priorities of the runs or the streets. I'm talking about the priorities of what runs are chosen. I mean, the green, ADA, stroller, routes, all that stuff, I think there's not agreement here on the priority list that you laid out.
A ranking issue, yeah, right.
We won't present anything.
Okay. So I think we have consensus on that. Are there remaining issues the staff needs direction on tonight?
Oh, no.
You've got time. You have 15 minutes till the clock hits midnight.
Okay, then, at this point, we have finished with our work session item on discussion of sidewalk plan. We have some direction to go forward. And I don't remember who, the name of the group, but there was a song in the late '60s, "See You in September." That one, that's, that's the song. And so we are adjourned until September.
Yahoo.
And that was exactly two hours.